Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. So Mayor Locardo designated me chairing the meeting until he gets here. He should be here shortly, but he asked me to start with our invocation. Today's invocation will be delivered by Mike Osborne from the Bayanihan Philam Foundation. And Councilmember Arenas will tell us a little bit more.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'm pleased to invite Angela Sangalong from the Bayanihan Philam Foundation and Mike Osborne from the Evergreen Studio of Music and Arts in District 8. They're going to lead us in today's invocation. I just want to tell you a little bit about the Bayanihan Philippine American Foundation. It's a nonprofit organization that serves as a resource for the community. And Bayanihan, a Filipino word that means collective support, highlights the rich heritage and intersections of their culture. The Evergreen Studio of Music and Arts believes that the music is a universal language that can be enjoyed across any boundary. It transcends differences in backgrounds, culture, and even age groups to bring together a universal platform for everyone. So it's a marriage of both groups. And today's invocation is provided by Mike Osborne, a veteran international recording artist, singer, guitarist, and songwriter. He's an instructor at the Evergreen Studio of Music and Arts, or ASOMA. This school is proudly based in District 8 and proudly owned by women and mirrors collaborative, multicultural, and melodic spirit of neighborhood. Mike Osborne will perform one of his original compositions and will be releasing his fourth album titled "Unbroken," a rich blend of blues, rock, and country forming modern Americana sound. Welcome, Mike.
Mike, thank you very much. Please rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all, and my apologies for my tardiness. I just came over from the High-Speed Rail Authority meeting over at the county building. I know that is of great interest to many of my colleagues. I should assure them all that there are many community members there expressing their strong views. So we will be well represented by the community voice there. Under orders of the day, does anyone in the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Could be Russian bots. Nope. Okay, that's fine. We're good.
It was probably a wrong number.
Okay, good. Excellent. We'll move on then.
Motion to approve orders of the day.
Thank you, Councilmember Camus. Let's vote. All right, we're on to the closed session report. Mr. City Attorney?
The council made a closed session. There is no report.
All right, thanks, Ed. On to the consent calendar. There are several items that are requested to be polled. First, 2.5 will be polled for Councilmember Paralis and his very extensive report. More on that later. Eric Shanauer, you'd like to speak on item 2.7. Why don't you come on down for that? And then we'll also poll 2.19. Are there any other items to be polled? Okay, let's start then first with item... First, let's have a motion on the remaining items. All right, there's a motion from Councilmember Foley, second from Councilmember Arenas on the remaining consent items. Let's vote. Okay. Mr. Shanauer, on item 2.7.
Good evening. Good evening. Good afternoon, Mayor Locardo, members of the council.
Don't curse us.
Eric Shanauer, Land Use Consultant and resident. I just, I came today because I was compelled to emphasize the importance of this action of raising the base salaries for the planners' positions in the planning department, just so that the council's fully aware of the challenges that we, the private sector, face trying to get applications through the process because of the vast number of vacancies. I work with the frontline staff daily in planning, building, public works, and what I'm told by frontline staff is that people are leaving to other nearby jurisdictions, other cities, because of two primary things: salary and workload. And in my mind, these are related, because if salaries aren't high enough to keep people, then we have huge numbers of vacancies, which means the remaining people have a heavy workload. So we have to improve the system, and this is a step in the right direction. Up on the chart is the Planning Implementation section. This is the city's chart, and you can see the light blue boxes are vacant positions. How do you run an organization with so many vacant positions? I've never seen the plan department improve beyond an 18% vacancy rate overall. The next chart is the Building Department Plan Check. So this is when you submit construction drawings to get a building permit. Look at all the engineer positions vacant in the Building Plan Check Department. And lastly is the Permit Center on the first floor. You see all the people waiting in the lobby for service. These are the folks that help them. And there you can see a lot of blue boxes. And the Permit Center is really a crisis right now. There's some great service ideas, like the express review, where you can literally go in with a smaller project and get a permit in like an hour. The problem is, I called to get an appointment to do that, and it takes six weeks to get the appointment. So waiting six weeks to get an hour express review doesn't help the customer, nor does it help the city achieve its housing goals and its job goals. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. This today only addresses planners in the plan department, but there are other partner departments in the continuum of development services that have to be addressed as well so that we have good service across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shanauer. All right, returning to council on item 2.7. I just offer that I very much share the view that was expressed, and I have, I had salary surveys, I think, two years ago, and glad to see we're moving this direction, although I think we need to be looking at some of those other development services positions as well. I know we have very significant vacancies across development services. All right, any other comments? All right, motion from Councilmember Foley, second from Councilmember Davis. Let's vote.
Yes.
Oh, Councilmember Spars, are you trying to push the button right now? Okay. Okay, item 2.7, our city council travel reports, and the...
2.5.
I'm sorry, thank you, 2.5. Thank you very much. And I am in receipt of the 10-page memorandum submitted by Councilmember Paralis that will soon be the subject of a major motion picture. Councilmember Paralis, you're free to speak, but please don't read this into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. I did not do a PowerPoint presentation this time, so instead I did an extremely lengthy report. So that's what you see in front of you, but I will just give a brief summary and so, and doing a little bit of a sort of show and tell for the audience at least so they can see what we have here. It is online, though, now. We did submit it. So I was able, two weeks ago, to go to Nashville with actually the Silicon Valley Organization's, one of their largest delegations on a study mission. Almost 80, there were 80 people confirmed, but not everybody ended up going on the trip. So almost 80 individuals, and you'll see actually on the next page, if you don't mind going to the next slide, we had a really good representation from the city of San Jose. If you can slide it down just a little bit, just the names of the individuals. So we had real great representation from the city of San Jose, and it was quite a great learning experience. Nashville is known as Music City. It was selected, SBO selects their destinations about a year in advance, and so it was selected last year, and certainly a lot going on in Nashville. But the number-one thing happening in Nashville is the number of developments that they have in their downtown core. And you can go to the next slide or the next page. They have 27 developments going on citywide, and 17 of them specifically in their downtown. And one of the things that Mr. Shanauer, who just came up and spoke, will appreciate and obviously appreciated there is that they have about, on average, now, we had some conflicting stories, but around a 90-day process to receive a building permit. And certainly, that's not hurting, right, with their, with their ability to get some of these developments off the ground. But there actually is a lot of other reasons as to why they're seeing such a boom in development. Their city, for one, is very attractive to millennials, and the theme, one of the themes that we heard was that the jobs of today are sort of going to where the employees are, where the workforce is, rather than sort of jobs picking a location and then, and then individuals moving to those cities. And so Nashville is just attractive to a lot of people at the moment. Still much more affordable than San Jose and the Silicon Valley region, but growing ever more unaffordable because of all the boom that they're having. They also are not against offering up some, some bigger incentive packages to some of the developers. One of the more controversial ones was Amazon. So they bitted for the Amazon H2, and we, as we did as well, and we sort of made a splash by saying we're, we're going to give zero in an incentive package. And I think we honestly have quite a great opportunity here with Google where we haven't had to give any incentives. But Nashville actually dished out $17.5 million in incentive package for bringing in 5,000 new jobs into their downtown core, and not without its own controversy, but it, but it certainly did pass. And you can go on to the, to the next slide there. I would say, you know, overall, and part of what we kind of learned and saw from within their, this boom that they're having, much like you would expect in any city, there's a lot of positive from it, but there's also a lot of challenges with it. And we had a great lunch in their downtown area, and even the speaker that was there, Betsy Williams, talked a little bit about even how her own business, a candy shop, right, could be in jeopardy of sort of being gentrified out or other businesses that come in and kind of, you know, take over some of the downtown core. In essence, she's still supportive of the growth that's going on, but just recognizing that there have been a lot of smaller businesses that have been lost, namely their honky-tonk bars. They're sort of down to two, kind of original. And if you go to downtown Nashville, that's, that's sort of what's, what's cool and historic about downtown Nashville, is it's very well-known for its live music, and that's really seen throughout the entire city, quite a great vibe that it brings into the downtown core, but really all throughout Nashville. And so it's, you know, and attempting to preserve that while they're also having all this growth was one of the major challenges that they're facing. Go to the next slide if you don't mind, or the next page. And you'll see here, actually, if you can do the one on the bottom, that's the Country History Museum, but down here on the bottom, you can even see just in the one image that I took, you can see four cranes, just sort of, and that's just in the heart of their downtown core right there. There's a lot of development happening all around. And, you know, and one of the major things that stood out, not just to me, but to the others on the trip, was not necessarily how much we, we learned from Nashville that we could bring back and sort of implement ourselves, but it was a lot of actually what, what not to do or precautions that we could take as we are growing as a city. And a lot of it has to do with where Nashville is located, in the state of Tennessee, a very red state. They've, they've attempted some opportunities to bring in some more tax revenues into their city, like inclusionary housing, which was preempted and shot down by the state of Tennessee. They attempted to pass, pass a transportation tax earlier this year. That failed miserably. So they're struggling with public infrastructure and the revenue to actually improve their public infrastructure. And it was very visible. I know Vice Mayor Jones is not here, but he almost, he almost ate it on a scooter. We were scootering through the downtown, and their, their roadways are, are really deficient. They, they could use, right, some, some payment maintenance dollars that we fought here for locally because of all the development. A good number of their sidewalks throughout the downtown are closed down, and there's not really other good avenues. Bike lanes are actually, right now, viewed at in their city as sort of only for outsiders. So the locals look at bike lanes as gentrification. They look at, as bike lanes as serving the incoming tech outsiders. And so there's, they actually have a bike plan, and the bike plan, unlike their transportation plan, is funded. They have dollars that they're sitting on. They actually just can't do it. They can't implement it because they get so much opposition from their locals and their local community saying, nope, bikes aren't for us. We're not the ones using bikes. It's going to be the new, you know, tech employees that are coming into our city that want to use the bikes. And so just a big struggle, and in fact, nothing more telling in that struggle. And you can go to the, to the next line. We can show them maybe the waterfront, the one on the, I think it's another one. That one, yeah, thanks. Nothing more telling in regards to the tension that they're having in their city than the vote that, that just occurred last Thursday. Their incumbent mayor lost his reelection, not, not even close, by a long shot, over 61%, lost his reelection. And while we were there, we were actually kind of surprised ourselves because we, we learned of the challenges that their incumbent mayor was having in his reelection while we were there, and it was just a few weeks before the vote, actually just a week before the vote.
Yeah, it was like eight days, yeah.
Yeah, and so even the mayor himself, kind of, when, when we had a panel with their, with their incumbent mayor, was saying, just kind of surprised that he was even there, like, there's a big battle ahead. But I think he even saw the writing on the wall, that this was, this was sort of, you know, the polls were not at all in his favor. He had taken second in the, the primary, and he did, he lost overwhelmingly. And a lot, and he brought it up in his, his comments, a lot of the contention, in, from what I heard, is in regards to the amount of development that they're seeing and that what the locals feel it's for, and that locals feeling as though this is for someone else, it's for outsiders, it's, you know, what is happening for them, what's happening to their neighborhoods versus what's happening downtown. And the, you know, the challenger, current council member there, sort of utilized that message and ran with it and was able to win overwhelmingly. So I think in part of it, in this message of sort of, you know, just understanding, I think one of the big takeaways, and you can go to, I think there's just one more picture on the last slide, and you can actually, if you don't mind, kind of scrolling up a little bit to the, that's good right there, yeah. So I think the, the last day, we actually, just an hour we took in the morning, but it was actually really well-attended by the attendees for the last day in the early morning. The consensus there was that there were certainly a lot of takeaways. There's some major differences that just exist in the state of Tennessee. One major thing, no CEQA, right? I mean, there's, there's some, there's some major things that exist in, in a state like Tennessee that don't necessarily exist here, so there's not, it's not sort of an apples-to-apples comparison in sort of what we're dealing with. But some of those takeaways certainly were in regards to, you know, being able to support the community that you have, get them on board, right, with some of this investment that you may be doing, and certainly wanting to get, you know, your, your, your public infrastructure and the ability to get some of those, those dollars to, to improve the local community, you know, before you maybe let some of the development get in front of you. And then you end up losing community support. In this mayor's case, you end up losing your reelection. And so I think that was really poignant. The other thing that I think it sort of was brought up, and I thought this was really good that one of our individuals in the delegation noticed, and I've already brought it up to Team San Jose, and it's that Nashville is now, for instance, it's the number-one destination for bachelorette parties. It has now topped Vegas. And, and no joke, and everybody who was there knows, like, almost every venue we were at, there was like two or three bachelorette parties. And so bachelorette parties happening everywhere. But it really is a great tourist location. Their downtown core vibrant, tons of live music, bars, all that happening. But we sensed even a little bit of anxiety and animosity from some of the locals that kept saying, ugh, in the bachelorette parties, and oh, those darn scooters. And one of the big ones was Airbnbs, just the number of Airbnbs that have sort of gotten away from them and taking up the housing stock because it is such a touristy town. And, but the lesson learned, and one of the members of our delegation said, hey, you know, we're just barely beginning to invest in our tourist marketing, right, tourism marketing for San Jose through Team San Jose and through our airport, and, and that we should ask ourselves, right? And before we end up in a place where Nashville is where maybe it's not exactly the type of downtown or tourism that we're looking for, that, that we say, what is it that we actually want? What is it we want out of our destination marketing and our tourism? And what is it that we want our downtown to look like? Do we want to build it up and, and make it the next, you know, bachelorette party capital of the world, right? Or what is it that we're building for? And so I thought that was a really great question, brought it up with Team San Jose. I think it's, it's good for us to think about as well, too, as we're building. I think we're already on a good path when it comes to that because one of the biggest telltales was when they talked about their placemaking. And placemaking, there was sort of a split presentation from the members that were on that panel. One group was talking about placemaking for the new incoming tech employees that were going to be moving into the city, and another was talking about what placemaking could do for its local communities. And I think it certainly, before you're, you're sort of building out your city for those that don't live here yet, you absolutely have to prioritize for those that are here. And I think we're on a great path with that and, and what we're doing with things like placemaking and how we are developing, how we're involving our community. And so we, as we know, we had some contention as well with, right, with our development partnership with Google, but our mayor did not lose his reelection, right? And we, I think we are on a, on a fairly good path when it comes to the way that we are growing. And so I think it was a very educational trip, and really appreciated being able to go. And I don't know if there's anything else. I know I wrote too much, so, but that my colleagues wanted to chime in on, so. And I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Paralis, and thanks for the thoughtful memo. Councilmember Foley?
I didn't take the time for a long thoughtful memo. Didn't, didn't really know I was supposed to, but thank you for the, the recapture of the meeting. I was able to participate in this year, and I actually ran a panel on homelessness and affordable housing. And what was interesting, we, you already heard that their permitting process, some said 90 days, the planners actually rolled their eyes and said that's not quite accurate. So I don't know what's accurate, but it seems like it's a lot quicker than the way, how we issue planning permits, but, or how quickly we do. But you should also know that in Nashville, the population is under 700,000, and they have about 2,000 homeless that were counted in their biannual count, homeless count report. Also, we learned that they have more shelter beds than they actually need for the homeless population, so they have shelter beds that go unfilled. The other thing we learned about affordable housing, or as it relates to that, is the median price range is 300,000 versus 1.15 million in the city of San Jose. So there are a lot of differences. It was interesting to compare the two cities. I'm not sure what takeaways you can take as far as it relates to affordable housing or homelessness. They referred to themselves as a low-tax, low-service state, and that any services that are provided to homeless population was done so through nonprofit organizations and not through the city. That's some of the takeaways that I got. So I, it was really informative. It'd be great to have that kind of music scene in San Jose. I think our musicians would think it would be great to have that kind of music scene in downtown San Jose, and I, we certainly have the talent to have that kind of music scene in San Jose. And I don't know that I'd mind all those bachelorette parties or bachelor parties if it's providing 15% liquor tax revenue is also a no. That is the one area that they tax heavily, so they have some vicer syn taxes. And with that, I will, if it hasn't been seconded, I'll second it, but I think it has.
I think it was, yes. Councilwoman Yeh?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't, well, I'll echo Councilmember Paralis's analysis, but I would just also say that I was on the trip as well. And for me, a lot of these trips are meaningful in the downtime, although I did get to hang this time with Councilmember Paralis, but I did get to hang a lot with some of our department heads and some of our folks from our tourism department, and even some other council members from Milpitas and cities nearby. And so if any of this presentation has interested you in going to Nashville, you should know that we have a direct flight from San Jose to Nashville. And going to Music City, you know, you have to do things like going to the Bluebird and hearing some songwriters hone their craft, so if you'd like, we'll do a little plug for you.
From San Jose to the Bluebird Cafe!
It's a direct flight. All right. Go SJC.
Thank you for your advertising to our millions of viewers here, Councilmember Yeh. Don't lose your day job. Appreciate all the insights. I just add, I do think there is something to the ability to be able to tax alcohol. That is not an ability we have, by the way. Of course, the state preempts our ability to do that, but I'm all for it. I've also learned, I think, that their housing costs, I was talking to a couple affordable housing developers, they say it's between a dollar 10 and a dollar 20 square foot to build. That's, our cost is about six times or more higher than that. So it tells you a little bit about the, the different kind of market that folks are in. Obviously, they got 27 high-rises, that's wonderful. It is just hard to build with the cost we have in comparison. And I've also learned that mayors have short half-lives, so you got to get it done while you can. Okay. Any other comments on this? Nope. Okay, on the motion, let's vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Onto item 2.19. Waskar Castro is here, like to speak, and I believe. Welcome.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Waskar Castro, and on behalf of our membership, we'd like to voice our support for AB 1487, which will create the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, a regional entity under the [inaudible]. under the umbrella of ABAG and MTC. Recognizing that our current housing crisis is a regional one, AB 1487 creates opportunities for coordination and implementation of this practices among cities and counties, as well as to increase the capacity and generate revenues for affordable housing. The ABAG Executive Board and MTC Commission are comprised of elected officials throughout the Bay Area who will oversee this new effort, and any proposed measure would be voted on by them and then require voter approval through the ballot, ensuring transparency and accountability to residents. As the current housing crisis continues to affect our region, the growing need for funding for affordable housing continues to grow, we urge council to support this bill and continue to pursue housing solutions at the local and regional level. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a comment on this matter.
Thank you, Waskar. Councilmember Camus, I believe you wanted to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, I pulled this item because I'm not in favor of looking for new ways to tax people. This is an unelected body that is going to be looking for ways to tax, even for the valiant effort of creating housing, but this is just, we already have enough ways, and this is why I'm taking a no position on it. To your point in the earlier presentation, one way to bring down the housing costs is to not tax more and more, and this is why I'm taking a no position on this.
All right. Councilmember Pross?
Yeah, not to debate it, but I think that it's just good to note because we do see at times some of our neighboring cities that may not be doing their fair share of building affordable housing. And if we were to create a regional authority, I think we'd obviously have more opportunity and more leverage to leverage some of those dollars regionally and actually get either more development built in some of these other cities, or even tap into the resources that are collected regionally to do some more building here. So I think it's something that we see as a major challenge, and having a regional authority, I think, again, I'm not an expert on this, but it's going in the right direction of being able to solve this crisis regionally versus just individually as individual cities. So I will be supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Pross. The effort from Assemblymember Chu was the result of very extensive consultation with two boards of elected officials, the Association of Bay Area Governments, as well as Metropolitan Transportation Commission. A lot of conversation and a lot of change to this bill before it took its final form, and we all recognize, I know, that this housing crisis we have is a regional one, and we want everyone in the region to step up together. Any other comments? Okay, on this motion, let's vote. Was there a motion, Councilmember Pross? There is now. Is there a second? Yes, Councilmember Foley.
I'm still waiting on votes.
We're going to go straight to 4.3, which is Approval Issuance of Tax Exempt Multifamily Housing Revenue Note and Low Note Proceeds for Vista Park Development. There's no presentation here, but Jackie's here for questions. Councilmember Camus?
Yes, thank you. Jackie, or who's going to be up? Oh, well, so I just want to make sure, this is an already existing low-income housing project in District 10? This is not new? It's just... It's an easy one, Jackie, don't worry.
Introducing our new staff person as well. So, yes, these are refinancings, where the existing development already exists, and they're doing rehabilitation of the property. And I will add, Kimmit.
And extending the affordability restriction for this.
That was my next question. Thank you. How long does it extend the affordability on that?
55 years.
Another 55 years?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. That is all the questions that I had, and I will make a motion to approve this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Is there a second on that motion?
There is now.
There is now. Okay, let's vote. All right, item 4.4 is a similar approval.
Move approval.
For Palm Court Development. Second. Motion, Councilmember Pross, second, Councilmember Camus. Any comments or questions? Let's vote. I don't have any cards from the public. Okay. All right, 3.1, reporter, the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone that this weekend, on Sunday, is our second Viva Cai event of the year. This year, it's, this time it's called Parks to Roses, so the route will be about six miles, linking up the Muni Rose Garden Park and Pocesto Park and going through Rena Green on the way. We are expecting good weather this weekend, so also expecting a good turnout. Want to thank PRNS and DOT, Police Department, and all the other departments that are involved with putting this on, and did want to take a moment just to thank all of the sponsors and partners, AARP, the County of Santa Clara, Casino Matrix, Google, Stanford Children's Hospital, San Jose Clean Energy, and others. So look forward to seeing everyone out there on Sunday, September 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions? All right, on to item 3.4, which is Approval Terms Agreement with OE3.
Move approval.
Thank you, Jennifer and team, for all your great work, and thanks to the leadership of OE3 for coming to terms. Any other comments? Let's vote. Councilmember Renus?
Mayor, I abstain from this vote.
Right. Objection, Councilmember Renus. Any other comments? All right, let's vote. Item 3.5 is Response to San Clara County Civil Grand Jury Report Entitled "San Jose Unfunded Pension Liabilities Are Growing Concern." Welcome, Jennifer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Jennifer Schembry, Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations, and with me I have Cheryl Parkman, Assistant to the City Manager in the Office of Employee Relations. We are here today to present the city's response to the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled "Unfunded Pension Liabilities." The civil grand jury began their investigation after reviewing the amount of general fund money the city was contributing each year to the retirement systems. Their investigation is based on the potential negative impacts to city services due to increasing retirement contributions. The civil grand jury report concluded that if changes are not made to the way the city's retirement systems are funded and managed, then the city will have to continually increase the amount it contributes toward pension and other post-employment benefit costs. The report contains six findings and recommendations that were applicable to either the city of San Jose or the two retirement systems, four of which were applicable specifically to the city and required responses. The city was responsible for responding for findings, recommendations, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and those are available in our report. Should the city council accept the city's response to the grand jury report, the responses will be sent to the presiding judge of the grand jury and posted on their website, and this will satisfy Penal Code Section 933(c), which requires the city council to respond to civil grand jury reports to the presiding judge of the Superior Court. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, questions? Councilmember Camus?
Yes, I appreciate the response, and to note that we are taking important steps already to reducing risk, and I'm no longer on the pension boards, but I think some of their concerns were valid, and we are already taking steps to do so. One of the suggestions that I think we should potentially take up again was to eliminate duplication of the two boards and see if we can merge them together. This is something that I've been talking about since I've been in office. It is costly to run two simultaneous boards, and I don't know if we can go back to looking at doing that or not, but it will, it would help reduce costs.
Yes, so in the staff report, we did mention that we do agree with the finding in general. It definitely is something that warrants looking at further. I think the retirement boards have a different perspective on that, but I think that when we establish the retirement working group, the stakeholder working group, I think that that would be something that would be very interesting for the working group to take a look at and analyze.
Great. Thank you for doing that. I'll move to accept the staff response. Thank you. Motion, Councilmember Camus, second by Councilmember Davis. Any comments? My question was just about the COLA. I thought it was an odd finding they had about urging us to reduce the COLA when there was a Superior Court finding, I think, based on the 2012 measure, that at least the court's view was that was illegal. I assume they were provided information about all of our efforts around pension reform.
I don't know specifically what they were provided. That is very, information that's very public, though. So, yeah, we were surprised by it, too. So we did note that in our response, though, that there was a legal decision prohibiting us from doing that.
Okay. Appreciate the response. Thank you. All right, on the vote, or on the motion, let's vote. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, Jennifer. Onto item 3.6, which is Privacy Policy Update. We do have a presentation, as folks are making their way. I just want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this. I see Jay Guevara on his way down, Sarah Zarate, Kip Harkness, and Dolan Beckel and their whole team. Rob, thank you very much. And the cross-departmental privacy working group, the external groups have been working on our advisory board, and Shereen Santoshim and the entire mayor's office technology innovation team for their work as well. We know that this is not the finish, but this is a really important start of this process as we build a strong privacy policy, and we've started with set of principles that have really resulted from a lot of extensive outreach, a lot of work from a lot of folks. So Jay, are you taking away, or Rob?
I am.
Okay. Hi, Jay.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, members of the public. My name is Jay Guevara, Broadband Manager for the Office of Civic Innovation in the City Manager's Office. Today, I am joined by a full complement in the City Manager's Office, and shortly, Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager, will be joining us. In spirit, Dolan Beckel, Director of the Office of Civic Innovation, is here. Rob Lloyd, Chief Innovation Officer, Information Technology Department. Marcelo Paredo, Chief Information Security Officer for the Information Technology Department. And Sarah Zarate, Assistant to the City Manager from the Office of Administration, Policy, and Intergovernmental Affairs in the City Manager's Office. We are here to talk about the incredibly important role of the city to protect and safeguard the public's trust with the recommendation to approve the citywide privacy principles. We have learned that only one city in the United States has a full-fledged privacy policy, and other successful cities that are currently developing privacy policies followed the best practice of establishing privacy principles before diving into the specifics of different technologies and how the public's privacy may be impacted. In today's presentation, we will cover four items. Number one, why do we need a privacy policy? Two, what is the purpose of the privacy principles? Three, how we develop the principles through community engagement? And four, recommendation to approve the privacy principles. Now I'd like to turn the presentation over to our team's policy development support, Sarah Zarate, Assistant to the City Manager from the Office of Administration, Policy, and Intergovernmental Affairs in the City Manager's Office, to frame why we need a privacy policy and the pivotal role of the privacy principles.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. My name is Sarah Zarate, Assistant to the City Manager for the City Manager's Office of Administration, Policy, and Intergovernmental Relations. So why have a privacy policy? The basic premise is that a citywide privacy policy safeguards and protects the public's trust as the city increasingly adopts new technologies to better serve our residents. I think to underline the importance, we should consider the absence of a privacy policy. Not having a policy can create confusion around what our standards are and necessarily leads to ad hoc solutions at the department and program level. By creating a privacy policy, we are communicating to our internal and external stakeholders the city's clear standards around privacy that are cross-cutting throughout our organization, regardless of which department you find yourself in. And to develop that policy in a way that's reflective of and institutionalizes the values of our community, it is important to first articulate the principles that will guide and be embedded in our institutional practices. Before we today is the first phase in our policy development process, establishing privacy principles. These principles define our collective values and will guide the policy development team's work over the coming months. And I use the word "our" in a broad sense to indicate not just city staff, but a multiplicity of perspectives that Jay will review as he discusses the community engagement process. As we develop a policy that builds and maintains public trust, we are dedicated to being intentional in our commitment to equity and community inclusion. This policy development team understands the important role that the city plays in ensuring the protection of vulnerable populations. Grounded in this value, the policy development process will ensure the continued inclusion of community voices to help guide how data is collected and used. I'll turn it back to Jay to provide further background on the development of the privacy
City Council recommended the creation of the citywide privacy policy in November 2017 with the unanimous approval of the broadband and digital inclusion strategy. In May of 2018, the Harvard Law School's Cyber Law Clinic performed a rigorous study of nascent privacy policies across the United States, as well as some international examples. Harvard recommended that the city of San Jose start with privacy principles as a best practice. Moreover, they recommended the privacy principles be grounded in broad engagement across several communities. Broad engagement entailed a three-pronged approach of, number one, conducting community meetings in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese; number two, seeking the expertise of industry experts through a privacy advisory task force; and finally, number three, collaborating with an internal working group across city departments. I will provide more detail about this broad engagement momentarily. Finally, on June 6, we shared the privacy principles with the Smart Cities and Services Improvements Committee, which referred the privacy principles to the full city council for today's recommended approval. Recently, on September 5, we presented the privacy policy development work plan to the Smart Cities and Services Improvements Committee with the next steps following today's privacy principles. Thank you. We conducted three privacy principles community meetings. The first was held on December 4, 2019, at Martin Luther King Jr. Library, conducted in English. The second was conducted on April 24 at Somos Mayfair Community Center, conducted in Spanish with the assistance of the Office of Immigrant Affairs. Also on that same day, April 24, we conducted the third community meeting at the Vietnamese American Community Center, conducted in Vietnamese, again with the assistance of the Office of Immigrant Affairs. A big thank you to some organizations and people that made this possible. First of all, thank you to Civic Makers, the community engagement firm that assisted us with our approach, to Zuma Maciel, Director of the Office of Immigrant Affairs, who is in the audience today. Zuma, thank you. To Mujeres Empresarias Tomando Accion, or Meta, who's also in the audience today, who helped us organize, thank you so much. Thank you to Somos Mayfair for providing the use of their space. To Huang Trong, Senior Recreation Leader from the Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Department, who helped us facilitate the meeting at the Vietnamese American Community Center. And finally, our deepest gratitude to all the participants who took several hours of their invaluable time to provide input on these privacy principles. Through these community meetings, we learned that residents agree with the city's approach and the privacy principles. We learned that residents are eager to see the final policy and its implementation. And finally, residents would like a strong method to ensure city and vendor compliance with the privacy principles. We also convened quarterly meetings with privacy subject matter experts on the Privacy Advisory Task Force. These include venerable representatives from the nonprofit, technology industry, academia, law enforcement, and local government. These include Victor Sin from ACLU. These include Victor Sin from ACLU, Roxana Marachi from the San Jose Silicon Valley, NAACP, Heather Patterson from Intel, Michelle Finer and Denity from Cisco, Bob Lynn from San Jose State University, who is in the audience today, Irina Raisu from the Santa Clara University, James Randolph, retired from the San Jose Police Department, and Mike Shapiro from Santa Clara County, who may also be in the audience today. Okay. The task force, the task force provided comprehensive feedback that we incorporated into the privacy principles. Finally, following the three community meetings and the quarterly task force meetings, city staff formed an internal privacy working group. Meeting monthly with cross-departmental representation, the Privacy Working Group reviewed the community engagement feedback from the community meetings and the Privacy Advisory Task Force feedback as well. The Privacy Working Group included the City Attorney's Office, the Police Department, Fire Department, Library Department, Information Technology Department, including Information Security, Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Department, Mayor's Office, and other departments as necessary. Our recommendation is to approve the following privacy principles. We value privacy. We collect only what we need. We are open and transparent. We give you control over your data. We share only what we need. We design for privacy and security. This concludes our presentation, and we welcome your questions and feedback.
Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager, just one thing really briefly before we hand it back over is, again, what this will do is guide us in our work of the development of a more concrete set of policy and kind of a toolkit approach to beginning to apply that policy to the actual technology uses. So, this sets, if you were to recommend this or any modifications, you might, this would set our framework for our work over the next several months to move this from principles into reality. And with that, we'll take any questions, feedback, or direction the council may have.
Thanks, Kip. Thanks, Jay. Okay, we have a couple of members of the community who'd like to speak. Charlotte Casey and Lola Isiaka. Forgive me if I mispronounced your name, Lola. As well as Saminou Usman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. I've been reading this very heavy book by Harvard Professor Shoshana Zuboff. It's called "The Age of Surveillance Capitalism: The Fight for a Human Future at the Frontier of Power." And in this book, Professor Zuboff describes how Google and Facebook in the lead, but also many other high-tech companies, have been mining our data, selling it to the highest bidder, and you, they, who then use it to influence our, not just our purchases, but what we buy, but how we work, how we behave, who we vote for, how we think. So, privacy is so important to all of us if we can hope to have a human future. So, I think privacy principles are a good start. But who do I go to, who do I turn to if I feel my privacy is being violated? What is in place? What I urge you to adopt is a surveillance technology ordinance, as the county has adopted, our county of Santa Clara, as well as cities like Berkeley, Davis, Oakland, other cities. So, a surveillance technology ordinance is very much called for in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Sisiaka, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I have to agree with Ms. Casey. I would like to commend the team for their efforts in including the public, but that's the reason why I'm here. I believe that the privacy principles are only like one of the many steps to establishing such a framework. Like, these principles by themselves, they don't address the questions of governance and oversight, nor do they answer the questions of transparency, accountability, and oversight. For example, who determines what types of data or technologies are subject to these privacy principles? How transparent is this decision-making process? If the public notices that a particular type of technology or usage model does not conform to these principles, then what happens? These questions are best answered, as Ms. Casey said, in the form of a surveillance technology ordinance. Such an ordinance will require an informed public debate and council approval at the earliest stage of the process. The council will have to determine the benefits outweigh the costs and concerns. The ordinance will require a robust surveillance. And as Ms. Casey said, I really encourage the city to follow the examples of Santa Clara County, BART, San Francisco, Oakland, Berkeley, and Davis to develop and enact a surveillance technology ordinance. Also, I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Oyala Isiaka. I am a board member of the Santa Valley Chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Isiaka. Usman?
Hello, my name is Saminou Usman. I'm the Government Relations Coordinator for the Council on American Islamic Relations, and also I am the Board Member of Secure Justice. So, I actually, I commend the council for considering these privacy principles and for considering, you know, the, the importance of maintaining and protecting our privacy because, you know, in this day and age, our privacy is being used and abused. And so, you know, while I commend the council for considering this, I do urge you to take it a step forward because honestly, these privacy principles are a great starting point. However, it does not account for, you know, the insurance that we have, transparency, accountability, oversight. And that is what, as the previous speakers had mentioned, a surveillance ordinance would do. And I remember, I actually met with the Chief of Police a couple of years ago to talk to him about considering a surveillance ordinance for the city of San Jose. I wanted to get his thoughts about this, and he actually said that he was interested in it because he wants to have, you know, some guidelines in place for how long does he need to keep the data for? You know, what, so he, he was, was actually in favor of it. So, I would strongly urge you to consider taking this as a step forward to adopting a surveillance ordinance like the cities of San, like the cities of Oakland, you know, Berkeley, San Francisco. And actually, I would urge to include even a facial recognition ban as well, in addition to a, to a regular surveillance ordinance. Santa Clara County was great, actually, was involved with the advocating of a surveillance policy in Santa Clara County. However, it actually needs, it needs to be a bit stronger, and I urge San Jose to adopt a strong surveillance ordinance to make sure that our privacy is protected. And then, my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you to all the members of the community who have been participating and have been offering insights and guidance in various ways, and will continue to rely on that going forward. I think we all agree, while it's taken a lot of work to get here, this is the start, and I know we've got more work ahead. I did want to thank also Marcelo Paredo. Thank you. I don't think I acknowledged you at the beginning. And I just wanted to mention in particular, a really valuable partnership for us. Shereen Santosham on, on our team, heading up the Technology Innovation Team in our office, reached out to Harvard Cybersecurity Law Clinic, and a woman there, Susan Crawford, who's a national expert in this, really oversaw a really extraordinary amount of work that was being done by those students, helping us benchmark what was going on in a dozen cities throughout the world, and providing us something of a, of a, of a roadmap for how we can move forward. And I think that has really helped our efforts considerably, enabled us to focus. And so, I really appreciate all the work that's being done as well by our team in really building those partnerships to expand and leverage the, the good thinking of folks out there in the, in the world who are working on these problems. These are not just our problems, and we should definitely be seeing how others are able to tackle them. So, on to questions. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Really appreciate seeing this a, a second time. I, I do have some questions. Going through the, the memo with all of the questions from the focus groups, will the privacy policy, which is going to be, I think, bigger than, than this, will that answer all these questions? So, one of them is, how long is my data going to be stored?
Yes, as the development work plan that we took to committee earlier this month detailed, one of the deliverables includes the retention policy, as well as other deliverables that are aimed at answering the questions that have already been raised by the community, as well as sustaining the community engagement, reviewing our approach, and then onward in the next 12 to 18 months as we refine the privacy assessment toolkit.
Thank you. Can you go through that timeline? So, you said 12 to 18 months, and that's for a toolkit? Is that related to the policy?
So, this slide is taken from our previous presentation to the Smart Cities and Service Improvements Committee meeting on September 5. It's also included on the city clerk's website for members of the public that would like to review this slide as well. This is a simplification of the overall process. Right now, we're in the end of September, and we're doing our project scoping and resourcing. That includes, for the first time, a recruitment of one full-time equivalent employee to be dedicated to these deliverables. Since we haven't had that in previous budgets, it's been roughly a quarter of one full-time equivalent from existing resources dedicated to this important pivotal work. We then go through research and analysis. We've already conducted a call with the city of Seattle and the city of New York, both colleagues and leaders, especially the city of Seattle. Then we move into developing solutions. Throughout that, you can see through the gray portion, we are continuing to work through community engagement efforts to review the approach, and then forward-looking, the privacy impact assessments. The deliverables are, are set to come out in March. And then finally, the last phase is, is bringing this forward to council and figuring out the impacts of implementation and what, what we can learn over the last series so that we can always improve as technology will continue. Top-line deliverables are a, a technology assessment, thank you. Toolkit, this allows us to take any service or technology evaluated if it is in keeping with the North Star guiding principles of the proposed privacy principles today. Moreover, to operationalize that process across all city departments for clarity and consistency. Other deliverables, as I mentioned earlier, include the retention schedule, a list of sensing technologies, and a governance model that establishes with transparency and clarity who are the decision-makers in the, in the overall process.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I think that detail is important for, for everyone to know about what components are going to be included in the privacy policy, so I appreciate that. The members of the public who spoke talked about a surveillance ordinance. How is that different from a privacy policy? And do we need both? Or did we decide, did we go down this path because we think it's more comprehensive? Or why did, why did we choose this to work on first?
We chose to start with the principles by watching the experience of other cities go through it and get it wrong many times. And so, Seattle's on its fourth try at this, and so what we did is we really wanted to make sure that we were pointing all of our efforts in the right direction. Specific policy around surveillance, I think, is an inevitable outcome of a privacy approach and will be one of the thing, one of the uses of technology that we would apply this toolkit to. And so, I see some language around surveillance and use of technologies for monitoring and cameras and all of that kind of thing to be part of what we would come forward in the next phase. But we felt that if we started with a particular technology, we would run, whatever it was, we would run the risk of sort of getting down the rabbit hole of that technology without stepping back more broadly and thinking about across everything that we do, internal and external, what do we want to make sure we're accomplishing with any particular piece of ordinance or legislation that we might bring forward? So, don't disagree with the speakers at all on the importance of looking at surveillance and providing guidance around it, but we wanted to make sure that we understood what the mayor and council's direction overall was before we embarked on how we're going to use that data in irrigation in parks, or how we're going to use it in libraries, or any of the other key, I mean, many uses of data in the city.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, and I will move approval with staff recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Camus?
Thank you, and I appreciate this. This is something that I've been focused on for years. I think I even put in a priority memo a while back, and it was one of the reasons why I voted against the NECOM deal because we did not have a privacy policy in place at the time when we were looking to install cameras all around the entire city. I really appreciate the perspective here, and I think maybe my staff and the staff of Councilmember Davis must have collaborated on those questions because I think that they were, a lot of them ones that I was asking, wonderful questions that you asked. The, the, I really also appreciate that you went out and spoke to the Vietnamese community and the Spanish community and the Chinese-speaking community. I would appreciate if you could also work with some of the Muslim community in the future. As an Arab-American, there tends to be a little bit of fear. There's a running joke that, you know, all our phones are being listened to as an Arab-American ever since 9/11 in the community, and I hear it often. And so, I want to make sure that we're reaching out to other folks in the community as well. But I do want to commend you. I thought, I actually thought that this process was going to be much faster, and I said, why don't we just, you know, cut and paste? And I think I might have told you this, Kip, years ago, why don't we just cut and paste and, and be done with it? But you've got, you guys have actually convinced me that we're doing the right, right step, although I do wish it was going faster. Thank you very much for all your work, and I'm hoping that my, my recommendation will be included in your work scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Krasco?
Thank you. I must admit that this is a, a little sci-fi for me. So, I appreciate the, the policy and all the work that you're doing, and I have a couple of questions for you regarding the outreach that you did. I know that you went out to Mayfair Community Center, so you're working with, you disseminate outreach with the Spanish-speaking community, and I'm assuming that you have translators there, and you had folks that, that the community felt very comfortable with, and that they trusted when you went out with this kind of information and this kind of material. If you could just elaborate a little bit on, on how that went, I, just because this is such sensitive information and such sensitive material, I just want to make sure that, that that outreach went, went smoothly.
Yes. So, again, big thank you to Meta, Mujeres Empresarias Tomando Acción was the group that we partnered with. They spoke in Spanish, in language, in culture, and recruited 14 to 20 Spanish speakers from the community. Many were mothers with, with young children. Childcare was provided, along with food, and these people took over two hours and participated with facilitation provided from the Office of Immigrant Affairs, and it was performed in language and culture with sensitivity to all the different ways, unique to every community, with personally identifiable information and how that can be viewed and what the role of local government is, again, to safeguard and protect that trust that's so important that we have with the community. And that, that was the approach that we took. We worked with Civic Makers, which is a firm that specializes in civic engagement, especially on, on complex issues, and we performed similarly in the Vietnamese-American community with the outreach.
And I'm just wondering, I'm trying to, I have to be honest with you, I didn't look at, I didn't get through the, the, the summary of the findings. If you could just give me a little bit of feedback in terms of, of whether or not you, you discovered, if there was any concerns, just like Councilmember Camus, you know, there's, there's a lot of concerns in the Latino community, but especially since the recent administration and the White House came into office, that our private information will be disclosed or will be used for deportation. our private information will be disclosed, or will be used for deportation purposes or identification purposes. And there's a lot of rumors. I don't know if they're accurate or not accurate, but that even Amazon has been cooperating with ICE. There's been rumors that something as benign as Burning Man has had data used to cooperate with ICE and identify folks. So, I don't know if any of that came up. And I'll get to my point in just a second, but I'm just wondering if that...
So, most certainly. Immigration status, citizenship status, was a topic, and we worked hard, working with Meta, Civic Makers, and others, to ensure that that was a safe space. We did not record attendee names, just general data, and we ensured that we were, remained sensitive to everything that's swirling around in the current environment.
And I think what we found in the feedback from the community was that these six principles actually, even though they don't directly address that, are foundational to creating a safe space, right, where we are intentionally, again, you know, giving people control over their data, collecting only what we need. And that seemed to resonate with people across all three of the focus groups, from all of the different perspectives, including the questions around immigration and immigration status, at least from our perspective.
Yeah. So, and the reason why I'm asking some of these questions, as you can imagine, I deal with it on a daily, as we're working in the community. And so, what surprised me is that we, that we're, I think what has surprised me about, as we're working through this, is that we haven't had a policy in place. So, my question is, the information that we have gathered, whether it's for scholarship purposes, or whatever other purposes that we have had in the past, practices, what are we going to do now with that information? How are we going to dispose of it, or how are we going to, how are we going to handle that? Do you know, I find myself now that even when I go to a doctor's appointment, I don't, even I myself now do not include my social security, even on a standardized form, because I don't know who that clerk is on the other side of the desk. Such sensitive information is being asked of us, and we don't know what professional practices they hold their own clerks to. So, anyway, so I'm just wondering, what are we doing with all that, all that files, and files, and files of sensitive info?
Great question. So, I can respond, but I'd also like to ask if the city attorney's office can respond as well. So, looking at our toolkit that we are developing as the next step, that can be applied retroactively for all the services and data that we already have in hand currently, as well as proactively into the future of what we might be considering adopting as a service or a new technology. And that toolkit will allow us to insert that as an input, evaluate the vulnerabilities, and the consistency with these proposed privacy principles, to see and identify, do we need to take further steps, even go so far as, do we need to drop the service or technology? We have not performed that audit retroactively yet, but we do have the deliverable in our work plan to start performing that at scale. And we need the principles in order to have the clarity across all city departments, across all services, so we can perform that. And if the city attorney's office can respond.
Right. So, in addition to that, as you know, councilmember, the city is subject to the Public Records Act, and we're subject to the Federal of Information Act with regard to information that a government agency has. However, there is a provision in the Public Records Act, as well as FOIA, which allows exclusion of disclosure for certain types of information. And in California, there are several exceptions. A lot of that information is health information, is personal financial information, and then there's also the Balancing Act, where, under the Public Records Act and FOIA, the city is supposed to balance the interest, the privacy interest of the individual versus the public interest in getting that information. So, that there are ways in which the city can balance privacy, as well as against the public interest in getting information, and this policy will help us in determining how we deal with that open area of privacy that is not specifically exempted under either of those two Public Records Act provisions.
If I can weigh in as well. So, one of the things we've done in roughly the last 16 months is, IT is also applying the National Institutes of Standards and Technology Framework for Information Security. So, it's called 800-100. So, at least at this point in time, we can actually apply those principles to make sure that we're protecting people from an information security point of view. We've worked with city attorney on some of those exclusions for certain requests in the past, and the city has actually declined certain projects and partnership offers because we couldn't say that the security, information security and privacy were respected enough. We will have to go backwards in time, as Jay referred to, once we get the policy in place, and we get whatever ordinances or other things in place. But, at least now, we do have a matter of practice that we review all purchases and information uses in the city.
And then just to add one more thing, at the risk of complicating it, there are many parts of the organization that do have different policies in place, in addition to the state or federal law, the library being probably the most notable of which, where there's extensive privacy policy in place. So, part of what we've tried to do with this is to elevate this, again, to a citywide level, so that it's not each individual department having to figure this out for themselves, but best practices that apply across the board, drawing from the experience of folks like the library and others.
So, you brought up a good point, that we're subject to PRAs. So, if, for example, if ICE were to make a public request of, say, a list of the latest scholarship recipients, would we have to turn that over?
So, if the city has a list, and there is no protection for that particular, under an exception, we would have to do a balancing to determine what is the risk in someone's privacy. Like, we clearly would not give them certain information, like if we had social security numbers, we clearly would not do that. We'd have to do a balancing determination as to whether or not it was important to give the address, or whether it was important to protect it, or whether it was necessary for them to get that information. It was more of a question is, why do they need that information? And because there is no specific exemption under the Public Records Act for that type of information, so we would have to do a balancing to determine whether or not the interest in privacy outweighs the interest in the public getting the information. Because ICE would be able to get whatever information any member of the public would also be able to get. Now, I know in some cases we have protected, like in for code enforcement. We do protect the names and addresses of people who complain about certain things in order to protect their privacy. So, in each case, we would have to determine whether or not there's an exemption, and if not, under the Balancing Act, is it important to protect the privacy, or is it more important to disclose that information?
And who would make that call?
So, the city attorney, along with the city manager and his staff, would make a determination as to whether or not there's a balancing on that case. Now, there's always the possibility, and we have in the past had people challenge us on that. And then, there's been an appeal that goes to the Rules Committee on cases where they've disagreed with us, and there's always the opportunity for them to go to court and force us to disclose certain information that we believed was private, when they believed that it didn't, it wasn't. Luckily, in a recent PRA case, the judges agreed with us, and that the city's basis for withholding documents was a legitimate case. But, in all cases, sometimes it's up to a court to decide whether or not we've made the proper judgment.
Okay.
Additional questions?
Yeah, no, no, for now. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I'm really happy to see a privacy policy and procedures coming, or principles coming through the city. I think it's really critical that we take a look at protecting individuals' data in all capacities that we receive it. But, I have a couple of questions. In, within the toolkit, I keep hearing the reference to technology, but there are paper formats of collecting data as well. So, will the toolkit include extensive ways to hold and maintain and keep private paper data?
We originally defined it as digital privacy policy as the outcome, but I think you raise a fair point that we can take into consideration on how we need to ensure physical security of any data that's gathered, even if it doesn't necessarily become digital.
I think that would be important, particularly, we have privacy policies as it relates to our residents, or it should include that, but it's also our employees. And our employees may be submitting things to Human Resources, for example, who, that are birth certificates, or marriage licenses, or very specific identifying information that we would want to protect, and that isn't digital. It might be a hard copy. So, I would really like to encourage you to include some capacity for retaining and keeping safe that data, the data we collect in that way. Is there going to be an opt-out policy brought to us, or will it be an opt-in for our residents?
That's actually part of what we need to do, determine the next steps. I think it may vary depending on what the use case is. There are some things where we're, we really can't give them the option, if they want to receive this particular permit, to opt out, or opt in. And so, part of what we're going to do is determine what our baseline is. Our rotation, though, with this is that giving them a higher level of control, which is asking them before they're being opted into stuff, when that's appropriate. But, again, that's part of why we're trying to set it, the principles first, which is to give it the highest level of control possible. So, we'll default to what we think is the highest level of individual control. In some cases, that might be, you have to opt in. In some cases, that might be an opt-out, but with a choice of lower service. But, we have, that's sort of the next determination that we make. But, this would tend us toward an opt-in rather than an opt-out.
Okay. And would that include, for example, your financial institutions? You have a mortgage, and they'll send you something saying you can opt out of all of the, of sharing data with all of these other sister organizations. We have sister departments, so would, might we include that in our opt-in or opt-out privacy policy, that we would want their authorization for their data to be shared with our other departments?
I honestly hadn't thought through all of that, with the exception of some of the law enforcement uses, which we draw a line for. So, usually, the distinction that I'm sort of making in my mind is, there are different levels of access to data that would be appropriate depending on the use. But, again, we haven't thought through it that far to see whether it'd be like, oh, we think we want to use your data for this, that, and the other. Is that okay with you? But, that's sort of the line of thinking. You can see that now. If you go to any European websites, for example, that are under GDPR, you'll see, sometimes you have to click, sometimes you don't, and it'll say, we share your data on this, this, and this, and this. Which ones of these are okay with you? And again, that's part of what we want to come back, having had a chance to work through the toolkit approach and specific use, rather than saying, in general, we would do that. But, we are looking toward the European example and others, to try to understand how we can give people the maximum control over their data.
Right. And I really appreciate it. Coming from the mortgage industry, where I'm required to, where I collect a lot of personal data in my mortgage company, I'm required to certify that I'm keeping it safe and protected, and that no one has access to it but my staff. So, I'm very sensitive to the issue, and really appreciate that you're bringing this forward to us. I have a couple other questions as it relates to the audit. In the memo, it talks about checking and auditing the departments that collect the information. How do you envision conducting the audits? How often do you see conducting those audits? Who will see the results of the audits? Will that be coming back to us, the whole component of, okay?
We don't know yet.
Still TBD. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reddick?
Thank you. Some of my questions that I had were answered, actually, when councilmember Krasco was asking the questions about privacy as it relates to some of the scholarship programs that we have. But, I'm going to expand it, just to include also the issue of public charge, and that public charge rule that we've seen change just recently. And so, that now includes housing. And some, of course, we have some housing services, and so, I'd like for us to take a look at how that would impact our residents, whether they, you know, participated in a safe parking program, or whether they have a Section 8 voucher that, of course, doesn't come from us, but may be part of our network of support, just so that we are also being very diligent about protecting our residents and their privacy. Because if we, you know, based on some of the principles, and I really, I said this to you when you came into my office and briefed me on this, I absolutely am supportive of the privacy principles. It's, I think it's worth taking, taking your time to do this process and do it well. You've seen other cities. Maybe do this a little more hurriedly, and kind of sidestep some really important discussions. And so, I really like that you're taking your time with the principles. I'd love to share these also with my community. I did hear you say that you had three community meetings. Will you continue to have community meetings all across the city?
Yes. As I shared before, excuse me, let me get to the last slide. We envision the next 12 to 18 months continuing community engagement through community meetings and potentially other means, where at the front end, we're reviewing our approach with the privacy policy development and the work plan, and then we will transition to direct engagement with the community on the privacy impact assessments. And that would address things such as transparency, governance model, how this can be scaled across the city efficiently and effectively.
I would also just add to that, that we thought community engagement is such an important component of the policy development process, that we included it as a deliverable. So, to councilmember Davis's earlier question of what are all of the deliverables, those are included in the September 5th memo to the Smart Cities and Service Improvement Committee, and one of those is community engagement.
Great. And I think it was said before, there's some, there's some groups that are a lot more sensitive to privacy, and as things are happening nationally, I know that we have a couple of folks in my groups in my district, such as the Sikhs, who often get confused for Muslims, and we also have a beautiful mosque out in my district. So, it would be wonderful to continue to have engagement, include some of these groups that are sensitive to privacy, as we all are, of course, as we interface more online. And unfortunately, we get added to lists that get sold, and then all of a sudden, you have, you know, 500 additional emails sent to you because you signed up for something, or something or the other. So, I'm very sensitive about the privacy needs of my community. I want to make sure that you continue to have them, and that they're also including some of our housing programs and that segment of our population, and that we are ready to make sure that we also protect those residents who are taking advantage of some of the programs that are just so needed right now. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. And just to tie that together with the earlier comment from councilmember Camus, well, we can certainly add in a specific time and attention to reach out to Sikh community, and the Muslim community in particular, and others that in this time may feel targeted, and may have a particularly high level of attention to their privacy, and make sure that we have their perspective and involvement incorporated in both the dialogue and the ordinances that could get developed. So, we'll take that on ourselves to incorporate both, in particular, the Muslim community and Sikh community in the next phase of the work.
Wonderful. And then, if you could just continue to add, and I know that you already have this in mind, but as the public, because the public charge rule has changed, we have to also be very sensitive to those additional categories, and one of those being housing. And so, we want to make sure that those who take advantage of our programs, I'd like to understand more myself, how their privacy is impacted. So, as you come back to us, I'd love to learn about those three things, or those... love to learn about those three things, or those three different groups, and how our privacy policies, as they're getting developed. Because I know these are just principles, right? We're yet to add kind of the meat to all of this. But I'd like to learn a little bit more how they are going to get impacted. Thank you.
Councilmember Tietz?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too many questions, as we've gone through this in smart cities. But since we're with the full council, I'll just kind of bring up a recurring, I guess, issue that I have. When we're out doing community engagement, what happens if we find the community has a higher tolerance threshold than we think, you know, we should adopt as a city? Because I guess one of my concerns is with younger kids, millennials, and then the kind of the tech-native community. You know, it's natural to give up your email, your phone number, or maybe even your social security number, if you're getting a free something. You're getting access to the IT network, which is Facebook now, or maybe MySpace before, whatever the next thing is. That's just kind of how they monetize your information. And information data is basically the new oil. And so I don't think that the ordinary person recognizes that. And so they might be more willing to strike the bargain of, sure, I'll give up my phone number or my email if you're giving me, you know, a discounted cellphone service, or some sort of, you know, first five free food deliveries, whatever. So how do we use what we're doing in the term of engagement to kind of also educate the community as to how valuable their data actually is? Not just ask them, are you willing to, what is your tolerance? Because when I go out there to my community and ask about, you know, surveillance cameras and things like that, I'm kind of surprised because I see that the feedback is, yeah, put them up, because all we want is to end, you know, mail package theft. All we want is to end, you know, the car break-in. So go ahead and play Big Brother. We don't care. We just want to catch these guys. So that's where I'm coming from.
So we share your concern that public education has to be a component of the policy development process and what comes after that. And to that end, as Jay mentioned earlier, we're in conversations with Seattle and New York, who are the leaders in privacy policy development. New York in particular has a pretty robust public education campaign that is working out of their libraries. And we began talking about that with them, and will continue to understand what that looks like.
Oh, thanks. All right. I yield.
All right. Thank you. Other questions? Again, thanks, everyone, for your hard work getting us to this point. I just want to emphasize, I think, the most important phase in this whole process, and there are four phases that are described on page four, I think it's the fourth, which is the continuous evaluation. We're going to, whatever we come out with, I know we discussed this at the committee, but whatever it is we come out with, any of these policies, we know it's going to be wrong. There's, technology is changing quickly. We've got a diverse community. We've got, you know, ground is moving under our feet. And so I would just caution everybody not to set expectations too high for the fact that we're going to suddenly get this right in our first iteration. And appreciate this is going to take a lot of revisiting and tweaking and changing as we learn from our community and from our experience with the technology. You know, we're not the only ones trying this, and folks are grappling with these issues at the state level. We hope it someday, at the federal level, there'd be a federal privacy policy. That would be a nice thing. And ultimately, those laws will probably preempt ours, I'm guessing. And so, you know, I just think we need, you know, we should focus on what we think the low-hanging fruit is, that we think we can get done, that'll have a meaningful impact. But I'd hate to see us spinning our wheels for years trying to get it right first. Let's get it out there, learn from it, and iterate. And I think that's how we do it mostly in this valley. Anyway, thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Okay, on the motion. Let's vote. All right. We're on to item, it's unanimous, we're on to item 3.7, approval of citywide insurance renewals. I believe Councilmember Camus has a conflict on this item, so he's going to recuse himself. And staff will be reading a revised recommendation, I believe. Julia joins us.
Good afternoon. Julia Cooper, Director of Finance. And I have with me today Jennifer Chang, Deputy Director for Purchasing and Risk Management, and Miguel Bernal, who is our new risk manager. He just started with us on July 29th and got thrown into the insurance renewal process. So, which has been a bit challenging. So he's going to go through a couple of slides, just to kind of give you some backdrop of the environment that we're working in today. So in terms of the changes to the recommendation language, there's recommendation language that's in Part A and Part B. Part A is fine. There's no changes. Part B, these are the changes, and I'm going to actually read them into the record. So to select and purchase additional insurance coverage for a not-to-exceed amount of $658,700, and that's an increase from $450,000, for the following products. Up to $15 million in excess property coverage for the flood peril for locations in high and moderate hazard flood zones for the period of October 1, 2019 to October 1, 2020, at a cost not to exceed $153,200, which is an increase from the $150,000, subject to appropriation of funds. Number two, auto liability insurance for airport fleet vehicles, including shuttle buses, regional wastewater facility fleet vehicles, and airport shuttle bus physical damage for the period of October 1, 2019 to October 1, 2020, at a cost not to exceed $302,000, which is an increase from $200,000, for the airport, and $123,500, which is an increase from $100,000, for the regional wastewater facilities, subject to the appropriation of funds. And finally, number three, there's no change, but I'll read it, up to $25 million in excess auto liability insurance for the airport fleet vehicles, including shuttle buses, for the period of October 1, 2019 to October 1, 2020, at a cost not to exceed $80,000, subject to the appropriation of funds. So this next slide just provides a summary where you can see what was in the memo and what the revised not-to-exceed amount was and the change. And we've coordinated with the regional, with ESD and the airport, and they have sufficient funds in their budget to cover this increase. The little bit of increase, $3,200 for the property flood, is spread across all funds across the organization, so that can be absorbed as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Miguel.
Thank you. So the city's conducting its annual insurance renewals under challenging market conditions. Property insurers sustained industry-record losses in 2017 and above average industry losses in 2018. In particular, proper policyholders with natural catastrophe exposure, the city's exposed to flood along the banks, at their locations along the banks of the Guadalupe River, as well as those that have a loss history are those most greatly impacted. I think if members can recall, in 2017, we had significant flood losses. Insurers are seeking price increases as well as restricting terms and conditions. One of the key terms for the city that has been-
Can you speak a bit more clearly in the microphone? Thank you.
One of the terms that has had a significant impact on the city is a reduction of limits for the flood coverage. That's why we're seeking excess coverage above and beyond the $10 million in limits that the incumbent insurer provided in their base quote. The restriction impacts some of the key revenue-producing facilities at the city, specifically items like the, locations like the airport, the SAP Center, the McHenry Convention Center, as well as the regional wastewater facility are impacted by this restriction. The incumbent is only able to provide $10 million in limits without reinsurance support. The city's received three proposals and are reviewing them for consideration. Next slide. City generally self-insures its liability exposures. Two exceptions are auto liability for the regional wastewater facility and the airport. The city's insurance broker, Arthur Gallagher, has marketed the programs for both the airport and the wastewater facility to over a dozen markets. Renewal challenges impacting both departments include escalating loss costs, which is general, which is impacting policyholders across the board, and more specific to the city, the recent claims experience. The airport is further challenged in obtaining physical damage coverage due to the high value of the insured vehicles, specifically the fleet of buses, and more specifically, the new zero emissions buses that were obtained in April. The city received proposals for both the wastewater, for the wastewater facility in the last couple of days, and expecting proposals for the airport later this week.
So with that, we're open to answer any questions you may have. And then we just have the revised recommendation language up on the screen for you.
Thank you. All right. Revised language, questions, comments? Motion? I'll give it to Councilmember Renas. Is there a second? Okay. Let's vote. All right. Thank you all. Item 7.1 is the approval of design-built contract with Walsh Construction Company for a digested sludge dewatering facility project at a wastewater facility. There's no presentation. Are there any questions? Motion for Councilmember Foss? Is there a second? I heard a second over here from Councilmember Foley. Is that right? Okay, let's vote. Okay. All right. And our final two items. Now, 7.3 is a climate emergency resolution. Carrie, did you want to take this with 7.2? Okay, we'll call both items. 7.2 is the building reach code for new construction. 7.3, climate emergency resolution. Welcome to Carrie Romano, Ken Davies, and team. I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this. Carrie, Ken, Julie Benebente, Rosalind Huey, James Sun, Ron Davis, Ed Schreiner of PBCE, you know, Chu Chang as well, certainly the entire team from NRDC, the climate advisor who's been working embedded with ESD from NRDC is Elena Almedo. I'm grateful for her work. From the New Buildings Institute, Sean Dennison, and the many advocates who are here, and some of whom you'll hear from today. I really appreciate their input and efforts. So here we are. Carrie, take it away.
Thank you. We'll dive into the reach code first. As a reminder of why we're doing this work, declaring the climate emergency as well as moving forward with the Climate Smart San Jose initiatives, because as you see in the news nearly every day, things are getting worse and not better. And as we discussed at the press conference today, June was the hottest year, hottest recorded June on record, and July of this year was the hottest month ever recorded. So as we see our youth take to the streets this Friday and across the country, it's a good reminder that they are expecting us to do something as well. And with that, we'll just move into the details of the reach code.
Thanks, Carrie. Looking at our most recent GHG emissions profile, the built environment accounts for about a third of our city's GHG emissions, second only behind transportation. Natural gas in particular represented nearly 60% of San Jose's total energy GHG emissions at the time the inventory was completed in 2017. When we refer to natural gas, of course, we're really talking about methane. There are two primary reasons why methane is so concerning. First, due to its global warming potential. It's up to 86 times more potent than CO2, trapping heat in the Earth's atmosphere when compared to carbon dioxide. And the second is due to methane leaks. Most of the natural gas supply is coming all the way from the Midwest. And recent studies show that methane leakage rates may be higher than previously estimated as a result, and results in direct emissions to the atmosphere. It's therefore important to focus on methane use, particularly in our GHG, reducing our GHG emissions. For a variety of reasons, we anticipate and encourage significant growth in our building stock over the coming years. And there's a lot of potential there for avoided emissions, as you can see, over the lifetime of buildings if we electrify. So reviewing, actually, James is making a last-second entrance, so I'm going to let him do this one.
Good timing. My apologies. Building Energy Efficiency Standard, our energy base code is updated by the California Energy Commission every three years, and get more stringent in each cycle since the state has set goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and to generate renewable clean energy. We'll talk about the cost later, but it's important to remember that many of the cost impacts are embedded in the base code. For this particular recommendation, we are amending two California codes, energy efficiency and green building. Excuse me. The overall 2019 California code, also known as Title 24, will go to council for approval separately in October. Ken? Well, let me take this as well. A reach code is local amendment that goes farther than what the state requires. Our proposed reach code incentivizes building electrification, requires solar photovoltaic PV readiness, where not already required by the state, and requires EV infrastructure. A local amendment is state code in energy efficiency, must be deemed cost-effective by the California Energy Commission and go through a 60-day common period. Ken?
Thanks, James. On this slide, we are providing an illustration of the GHG reducing effect of the proposed code circa 2021. 2021, because that's when San Jose Clean Energy's electricity blend is scheduled to be carbon-free. Emissions from all electric buildings would be zero. That's not shown because we're not quite there yet. But if you focus on the total columns on the far right, we anticipate the proposed reach code would get emissions down to at least the 1,500 metric ton CO2e level, depending on uptake of all-electric construction. But we think it could go even lower than that because of the financial benefits. We're already seeing a bias towards all-electric construction as a cost-effective solution, even without a reach code driver. And then on the screen there, you see a few examples of the all-electric buildings going up locally here in San Jose and regionally. And there's a much longer list as part of your attachments. There are additional benefits to installing EV charging infrastructure at this time. Just to go over some of the terms, EV-ready or electric vehicle-ready means a powered circuit from the panel to the parking stall, up to and including the socket. EV-capable means space in the breaker panel to accommodate future EV-ready spots, plus an empty conduit between the panel and the parking space that would just need the wiring, plug, and breaker to be installed at a later date. And as you can see on the slide, at a marginal cost of just $490, if that capable slot is installed at the time of construction, the upgrade is pretty light. So it makes a lot more sense to install at the time of construction, since retrofitting can involve retrenching parking lots or going back into walls. Having that charging available short, right away or shortly available, means that we're helping our low-income disadvantaged residents towards the transition to EVs as well, which have a lower fuel- a lower fuel and operating cost, so there's an equity component to that as well. A big thing to highlight is the health and safety benefits of removing natural gas. It makes us safer and improves indoor and outdoor air quality. Underground gas infrastructure continues to age and has a growing liability that is being reflected in gas rates. No gas in the home means no carbon monoxide monitor requirement in the home. You would still need one in the garage, but not inside. And no harmful emissions coming off of gas ranges, which have shown to episodically exceed outdoor air quality standards inside the home. Greenhouse gas emissions from natural gas now exceed those of coal in the U.S. and have since 2015, according to the U.S. Energy Information Agency. So we're talking about a regional effort. This is happening throughout the region and the state. The CEC is anticipating at least 40 to 50 jurisdictions will be coming forward with electrification reach codes during this cycle, and so it's been a real regional effort and a lot of collaboration around this right now to have some consistency in codes throughout the area. In terms of stakeholder engagement, we have our city reach code webpage that we've kept updated, invited over 65 stakeholders, 200 neighborhood associations with our outreach efforts, four formal stakeholder engagement workshops from May to July, five additional public presentations, and several, actually, it's been quite a few individual meetings as requested. Per Councilmember Renus' request at TEENIE, we did hold one more additional just last Friday in hopes of attracting and informing more residents. That was mostly more environmental advocacy and electrification industry groups that we've been working with on this issue, and their comments essentially echoed what we have seen to date: do a complete ban of natural gas, increase charging amperage for EV requirements, and the number of overall EV spaces. They did inform us there had been some cases of comment letters not getting captured, so we had advised them to use the e-comment feature, copy Agenda Desk, and the clerk's office to ensure that, so hopefully they're all on record at this point. In terms of comments we got back, do more in terms of electrification readiness, add battery storage, require all-electric, more EV spaces, as I mentioned, provide incentives for charging infrastructure, and then concerns over the ability of the grid infrastructure to handle, you know, mass electrification using the highest EDR, Energy Design Rating or Compliance Margins, for buildings that still elect to keep natural gas, and then just with costs of all-electric building and EVCI.
The chart shows two co-compliant paths that builders can take with our proposed reach code. Please note that they are designed to get greenhouse gas reduction either way. For example, a mixed-fuel building needs to comply with higher compliance margin, which means the building is more energy efficient and uses less energy that will result low emission to environment. Just to clarify on the chart, the draft and proposed requirement for all-electric is same. However, responding to stakeholders' input, the proposed requirement for mixed fuel is slightly less than the draft numbers. The code definition for high-rise residential is defined as four stories or less, more, excuse me, and low-rise as three stories or less. Therefore, high-rise can vary from a downtown high-rise structure to a podium-type construction with multifamily unit above. The incentive for all-electric is that there are no added requirement beyond 2019 Energy Efficiency Standard. Solar readiness required for all buildings were not fully covered by the state, which are high-rise multifamily, hotel-motel, and non-residential occupancy types. The same EV infrastructure is required for both pathways. That is, for single-family requires one EV-ready, multifamily requires 10% EV with supply equipment, and 50% EV-capable. All non-residential require 10% with EV supply equipment and 40% EV-capable. All calculations must be based on the total number of parking spaces. We'll talk more about EV definition later in the presentation. For mixed-fuel setting, where the builder has elected to keep natural gas in the building, the builder must include added energy efficiency to achieve emissions reductions that would have come through the removal of natural gas. For office and retail buildings, require 10% higher than base code. High-rise residential, hotel-motel, and other non-residential require 5% higher than base code. For low-rise and single-family require their energy design rating to be at minimum 10 point. Also, the mixed-fuel building must make everything in the unit fueled by gas, electric-ready, meaning they must have electric infrastructure in place for a future retrofit from gas to electric to occur. Here's more information on electrification readiness. It's ability to cost-effectively have gas appliances and equipment replaced with compatible electrical appliances and equipment by providing electric infrastructure components upfront, such as raceways in a concealed or inaccessible area, junction box, panel capacity where needed, plugs, and wiring. Requirements are different for different gas loads. For example, for a gas stove, a full circuit with breaker and outlet is required, but for a central gas boiler, only raceway and capacity are required. In 2019, Title 24 already includes electrification readiness for residential gas water heater. Solar readiness is basically buildings need to accommodate a future solar installation, which includes identification of a solar-ready zone, structural adequacy for solar equipment, and interconnection pathway from service panel to solar zone. Solar-ready saves about 10% of the total install cost of a system versus non-solar-ready. There is a nominal associated design and construction cost. Ken?
Thanks, James. Thanks, James. So we'll, from a cost perspective, let's compare electrification-friendly to, in terms of reach code. There are two compliance paths in the proposed reach code. If we consider that all buildings must meet the state's new 2019 base code, then at that point, the all-electric building is done. There's no added cost above the base code. In meeting the added efficiency requirements, again, to achieve GHG reductions through this pathway, the mixed-fuel building that still has natural gas will need to be even more efficient, in other words, above the code, and will have a higher first cost of construction as a result. And then just noting, lifecycle costs include financing costs and a net present value calculation, so it's not just a straight-line equation across the page there. Another way to look at it is to compare both building choices against the base code. So in the first column, you see a lower first cost of construction for electric versus mixed fuel. Intuitively, this makes sense because we're not adding gas service to the house, so no gas main, gas meter, and piping after the meter. In the second column, annual utility cost estimates, and in the third, lifecycle costs. Super important to note that those second two columns are electric versus mixed fuel costs today. So let's take a look at what to expect with gas prices. Everything we're reading shows that much larger gas price escalations are coming compared to electric, so that over time, the relatively higher annual utility costs and lifecycle costs compared to mixed fuel is going to trend down. PG&E cost increase estimates went from 1% in 2017 to 6% in 2018, and that is just to support retrofitting to current regulations. There will be additional future costs as gas infrastructure reaches its end-of-service life and has to be replaced. Southern California gas proposes a much more egregious increase of 42% over the next four years, for example. Part of that trending is going to be exacerbated as we see regional and statewide pushes towards electrification, like what we're seeing right now, by fixed costs for gas utilities getting spread over a smaller and smaller customer base. And then of note, just farther out on the horizon, by 2035, it will be more expensive to run 90% of gas plants being proposed in the U.S. than it will be to build new wind and solar farms equipped with storage systems, according to a report out just last week from the Rocky Mountain Institute. Finally, while it's important to be mindful of costs, we need to remember that what gets built under this reach code will be multi-generational in life expectancy, so how long do we want to have natural gas, a fossil fuel, potentially around? This chart shows where San Jose lands relative to other cities in the region relative to the stringency of the proposed code, all based on information known to date. It has already been a big summer for reach codes, and we're in the midst of a lot of reach code adoptions right now. Of course, I think people have heard that on July 16th, Berkeley became the first city to pass a natural gas ban that requires all buildings to pursue all-electric construction. And then more recently, September 10th, Menlo Park in Santa Monica passed reach codes, and the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors voted to move forward with one. Menlo Park's reach code requires nearly all-electric construction for new low-rise residential, non-res, and high-rise buildings, and solar installation for the latter two. Santa Monica's code closely resembles San Jose's proposed code, but their council also recommended developers pay an in-lu fee to commit funds for retrofit, for helping to retrofit buildings from gas to electric. Windsor, San Mateo, and San Luis Obispo also passed either all-electric or electric-preferred reach codes within the last month or so. And now we'll take a look at proposed EV requirements. So we've talked about this a little already, but let's run through the electric vehicle charging infrastructure, or EVCI definitions again. EV-capable and EV-ready assemblies don't require an EV charging station to be installed at the time of construction, rather that a building's electrical capacity and other infrastructure be ready to install charging when demand for that increases. EV-ready puts the end user closer to plugging in than EV-capable, but both assemblies require post-construction installation of supply equipment before use. EV readiness includes, again, a dedicated electrical circuit with sufficient capacity for each charging spot, installation of conduit and wire to the charging spots, electric panels labeled EV-ready positioned near where people will park, and then having the supply equipment provides all the equipment necessary for an EV user to pull up and plug in. As a percentage of overall project cost, you can see what we proposed is quite low. These are examples based on a multifamily and a non-residential development with 100 total parking spaces, so you can see an added cost there of less than 1%. Here's a comparison of San Jose's proposed EV requirements against some other cities. You'll see an added definition here of conduit only for some other jurisdictions that is less onerous than EV-capable. Literally, it only requires conduit, no panel capacity, no wiring, so we think that will add costs later. And then, why this reach code? Why do it now? It responds to stakeholder support and concerns, seizes the opportunity to electrify buildings and transportation at a lower cost than at the time of retrofit, maintains a significant reduction in GHG emissions, and timing ensures alignment with the 2019 effective date, the 2019 Building Code effective date of January 1st next year. More impact now, because the sooner we get started on that, the better, and it provides us with lots of progress on Climate Smart and American Cities Climate Challenge goals. In terms of next steps, after adoption, we would submit the reach code to the CEC for approval and public comment, provide training and resources to city staff, the public, and developers, pursue funding opportunities to incentivize all-electric buildings, EVs, and EVCI in San Jose, and begin to collect and report data on the reach code impact. We're also pursuing goals of having future city buildings be zero net carbon at time of design. So we'll get wrapped up here, but before we do, having read the mayor and councilmember memo, for purposes of hardship and recommendation 4D there, we do need to just define that we are defining permanent supportive housing per state law and area median income per muni code, and that the hardship exemption is based on 2019 base code, which is a cap of $400 per dwelling unit. And that's the fine print on that.
And you'd like that incorporated in the motion?
Yes, sir.
Right, Ken? Okay, thank you. I'll ask the maker of the motion to incorporate that. We've got many members of the community. Thank you, Ken, for all the work and everyone on the team. Many members of the community like to speak and appreciate their patience. We'll start with, you can just come down as I call your name, Kimmy Narita with the NRDC, and thanks to Kimmy and her team in NRDC, Wescar Castro, Mimi Spreadberry, Roger, I believe it's Roger Boya, and Ron Frund, and James Tullia. Welcome.
Hello, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Kimmy Narita, and I'm the Director of Buildings and Energy for the American Cities Climate Challenge at the Natural Resources Defense Council, and I want to express my support for the ambitious reach code proposal submitted by Mayor Locardo and councilmembers Peralas, Diop, Carrasco, and Davis. It is bold climate action, which will also directly benefit the city's economy, residents, health, and safety. As Ken mentioned, buildings last for decades, so what we build now will matter for generations. I also wanted to emphasize the American Cities Climate Challenge's commitment to San Jose in the long term. So once assuming the reach code is passed today, we will stick around and help on the implementation side importantly. So that means helping with the community, engage on understanding what all-electric appliances and opportunities are available. That means helping with design for multifamilies, so we can get some really cool multifamily buildings, all-electric, on the ground here in San Jose. And that means working with the wonderful staff of ESD and Buildings Department on anything that they need going forward to make this a success in 2020. So I wanted to offer up that commitment of the American Cities Climate Challenge to thank mayor and the councilmembers for their leadership, and let's get this going.
Thanks, Kimmy. Thank you. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Roger Boy from San Jose. The long-term lead time for really changing the city, urban areas, to electricity, it's immensely more efficient. We don't need natural gas. You have urban air quality and drivability and other issues like that, but even further is now possible. There are hydrogen fuel cell vehicles on the market, from semis to Hondas and Toyotas. The fuel cells can be plugged in at night and be added to the grid, so it's not only do these vehicles make sense for getting rid of fossil fuel, they actually can recharge the grid. And so you'd have to, the only thing would be, the infrastructure for the EVs would have to be sufficient to provide power both ways. So by starting now with, this is, the capital of the Silicon Valley, directed electrons have been shown to be very useful, and we can go much further with it. So I would suggest, I'd urge, going forward with this.
Thank you. Welcome, Spreadberry.
Hi, I think I made a mistake.
Oh, you know what? You're speaking on the climate emergency.
Right, correct. But I support this as well, so I'll yield my time.
We actually called the climate emergency item as well, didn't we? Yeah. Was there any presentation you wanted to make on that, Carrie? Okay, so coming back to you, we are also considering the climate emergency, so feel free to speak on that.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you very much, Mayor Locardo, and City Councilmembers, for this time for public comment on the climate emergency resolution. I'm a volunteer with Orchard City Indivisible Environmental Justice, divest Silicon Valley. I'm also an adult member for Silicon Valley Youth Climate Strike, among other climate groups. I was evacuated during the 2017 February floods in San Jose. This was a climate emergency. Those were catastrophic floods. San Jose residents are very concerned, and the youth are scared because they are afraid that they will not have a livable climate. We are in the middle of the sixth mass extinction. 200 species go extinct every day. There are, I believe there are no legal binding requirements with this resolution, but San Jose residents and the youth hope that you will not only walk the walk, excuse me... Jose residents and the youth hope that you will not only walk the walk, excuse me, talk the talk, but walk the walk. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ron Freund, and I'm with Plug in America. We're a nonprofit organization that supports the electrification of transportation. And I represent EV drivers from all over the place that are willing to live in an EV-ready home in America's 10th biggest city. I've driven electric vehicles for 21 years. I drive them today, and so don't all my family members. If work to install the EV readiness is undertaken and goes forward, we want to make it a little bit more future-proof than what the current proposal has in it. And I want to urge you to modify one paragraph specifically. It's paragraph 5.106.5.3.2. It's the electric service capacity. And that's in the current draft proposal. Before you adopt this reach code, just make one small change. It'd be accommodating not an 8-amp service, but instead at least a 30-amp service. Otherwise, it'd be basically effectively like equipping San Jose with a floppy disk drive in the high-speed era of solid-state USB memory sticks. Just change the numbers, my only request. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Castro. After Oscar, it's James Tullia, Susan Butler Graham, I believe it's Yian Trong, please forgive me if I've mispronounced your name, ma'am, Rebecca Haberman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. On behalf of our membership, we write today in regards to item 7.2, the reach codes for construction in the city of San Jose. We would like to thank staff for all their work on this item. We would also like to commend the city in all their work being done through the Climate Smart Initiative to ensure that we are making strides to lower our carbon footprint in our response to serious climate issues affecting the globe. While we recognize the need to become more environmentally conscious, we must also take into account how any policy moving forward may potentially affect the production of housing during our current crisis. As the conversation surrounding cost development takes place, we must be mindful how any modifications could potentially affect the feasibility of projects during a time where we are in need of increased housing production. With that in mind, we would like to voice our support of recommendations laid out in the memo from Mayor Liccardo and council members Peralas, Diop, Carrasco, and Davis. Of the many recommendations, we would like to point out a specific point in recommendation number four, section D, which recommends providing hardship exemptions for permanent supportive housing in developments under 30% AMI. Exempting these housing types with these requirements removes potential cost increase and makes this much-needed housing type more feasible. In regards to connecting affordable housing developers to available funding sources, we would like to mention that affordable housing developers already tap into various funding sources in order to finance a project. We would recommend there be a concerted effort to consolidate any funding programs that may be available, so we do not create any extra burdens for those looking to build much-needed affordable housing. We look forward to continued coordination on this matter going forward with hopes of seeing increased production of housing while ensuring that San Jose does its part in addressing severe climate issues affecting our planet. Thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Tullia.
Good afternoon, this is James Tullia. I'm with the, I'm the chairperson of Carbon-Free Silicon Valley Group of City Climate Leaders across Santa Clara County, as well as San Mateo County, working in collaboration and coordination to try to work together on the climate emergency and climate action. First, on the climate emergency, I'm speaking for a number of folks in the audience that we strongly support that you make that resolution. Please stand if you support that. Thank you. So, save you some time.
Thank you.
And as well regarding the reach codes, our Carbon-Free Silicon Valley Group is focused on reach codes as the next most important thing after doing the Community Choice Energy efforts to have clean energy. There's not only what happens with the new buildings that are in place for so many years, new building standards help create the market readiness for the existing buildings, which is a tougher challenge, but the new buildings get the ball rolling with equipment being available, training being done, and so then that helps set the stage. So the sooner and the more aggressive the new building standards, the easier it is and the quicker we can get to the existing buildings and get natural gas out of the building stock entirely as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Haberman, and I'm part of the Mothers Out Front team. Personally, I favor the electrification of new buildings. Here in California, we are prone to earthquakes. I shudder thinking about natural gas explosions that create most of the fire damages in the aftermath of a quake. Any new building built with gas, therefore, is a tragedy. We need to do everything we can to ensure that every new building in San Jose is built with state-of-the-art electric technology. Please leverage the ACCC grant to show even more climate leadership. As a mother, I thank you for strengthening the proposed reach code, and I hope that all of you will vote for it. Thank you for your time, and reach for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Haberman. Welcome, Susan.
Hi. The strengthened reach code for building electrification is the next most crucial step toward a sustainable future that we need for our kids and our grandkids. We have the technology to construct buildings that are 100% electric. It's proven to be cost-effective, and we need climate equity for all of our residents. We at Mothers Out Front want San Jose to ensure that developers choose to build all-electric. That's why we want the City Council to adopt the new strengthened version of the reach codes proposed by Mayor Liccardo and other council members. We no longer need to build with fossil gas. Gas is dirty and dangerous. People in multifamily buildings and high-rises deserve clean indoor air, lower utility bills, and access to overnight EV charging. Our children and our grandchildren deserve sustainable, clean buildings and a livable climate. Our city residents deserve the green jobs that will be attracted to our city by the strengthened reach code. San Jose could and hopefully will be the climate smart example for other cities and states to follow. And remember, our kids will be living and working in these buildings long after we're gone, and they deserve the best reach code possible for building electrification. San Jose, let's reach for the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Butler Graham.
Thank you. Ms. Trong, welcome. After our next speaker is Ariana Haberman, Daniel Sedeno, Jennifer Devlin, and, boy, look, I'm trying to read the last, the last name is B O Y G N, I believe. I'm having a hard time reading the writing. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Yian Trong. I'm a climate activist for four and a half years. I'm here as a member of Mothers Out Front. I'm here to ask you to support the Mayor Liccardo's strengthened reach code proposal. Many organizations support this also, including Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action, Mothers Out Front, 350 Silicon Valley, Sierra Club, Actara, and more. We want to incentivize construction of all-electric, no-gas buildings in San Jose, as well as ensure that parking spaces in multifamily dwellings are at least EV-ready, which will reduce, which will help reduce barriers to EV adoption. In order to boost the chances of developers choosing to build all-electric buildings, we suggest that you convene a technical roundtable of experts by November 15th to provide additional support. The key objective would be to find ways to encourage any developer seeking to build in San Jose with gas to first do a thorough cost comparison analysis, showing what the project would cost to build all-electric versus with mixed fuel. The youth organizers at Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action are working hard to organize the climate strike this Friday. We are keen to see the mayor's proposal adopted. Vote for the mayor's proposal to protect their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Forgive my mispronunciation of your name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ariana Haberman, an eighth grader at Union Middle School. I would just like to start off by thanking the mayor and council members for already taking some major steps to reduce our city's greenhouse gas emissions, like creating SJCE in the Climate Smart San Jose Plan. As a youth, it feels really scary to be facing this huge burden of the climate crisis that we'll soon have to carry. And speaking for all of us, I would really appreciate it if you would do everything in your power to ensure that we will have a livable climate when we are your age. So right now, that would mean passing the mayor's updated version of the reach code, but also maybe going beyond that. Consider this just a first step toward ensuring the construction of all-electric buildings in San Jose. Now more than ever, it is super important that no more buildings are powered by air-contaminating, climate-destroying, and dangerous fossil fuels. No one has an excuse to do that when there are cost-effective, all-electric options available. It is of the top priority that the city of San Jose does this, not only to protect our health and safety, but also to be a role model for the rest of the country. I and 70 other youths who signed a digital petition urge you to take action right away. I may not have a big voice since I cannot vote, but I need to do my part by asking you to do your part to protect the climate and our future. So please vote yes for the new reach code. Thank you.
Thank you, Ariana. Welcome, Mr. Sedeno.
Try to top that. I don't know if I can. Mayor, City Council Members, Daniel Sedeno, PG&E Government Affairs, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We did send a letter to the city in support of all-electric new construction. I'm here just to reiterate a few points. PG&E strongly supports California's climate and clean air goals. We recognize that part of achieving these goals involves increasing the use of energy-efficient electric appliances in buildings when cost-effective. PG&E welcomes the opportunity to avoid investments in new gas assets that might later prove underutilized, as local governments and the state work together to realize long-term decarbonization objectives. With this in mind, PG&E supports local government policies that promote all-electric new construction when cost-effective. We believe a multifaceted approach is needed to address climate change, including electrification, as well as opportunities to decarbonize the gas system with renewable natural gas and hydrogen. And as electric policies are implemented, PG&E will also continue to ensure safe and reliable operation of the existing gas system to continue supporting customers who do depend on it. In conclusion, we do appreciate the opportunity to partner with the city of San Jose during the policy development process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Welcome, Devlin, and Will Smith, Stet Samborn, Francesca Wall, and Matthew Go.
Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and council members. Thank you for hearing us today. My name is Jennifer Devlin. I'm an architect and principal with EHDD Architects in San Francisco. We're a 65-person architecture firm that has designed over a dozen all-electric buildings over the last 19 years, and the first one of those was right here in San Jose. Back when we started doing this, the cost was a serious premium to those buildings. Now that has changed, and that cost has come down. All-electric buildings are no more than buildings with gas. In fact, we've just completed a project where the contractor's pricing showed we saved $75,000 by going all-electric with the elimination of gas piping. Our biggest client is the University of California, and now they prohibit gas from heating, for heating and hot water in all of their buildings on all 10 campuses, whether it's housing, offices, or academic buildings. They see the writing on the wall and don't want to build buildings that they have to retrofit as they reach California's carbon-neutral goals over the next 25 years. It's more cost-effective to go all-electric upfront than from the start than to rip out gas infrastructure and equipment years from now. We're recommending to all of our clients that they go all-electric. It's safer, healthier, and more reliable. We fully support the mayor's proposal for an all-electric requirement in this reach code. We believe that the modest incentives requiring gas buildings to be some percentage better than code are not very effective. So Nomak Clean Power has been offering very generous financial incentives in the fire-rebuild areas to go all-electric, but only 1/3 of the homeowners are taking advantage of these incentives because gas is just business as usual. It's just easier to do what we've always done. The other 2/3 of those homes, however, will need to retrofit in the next couple of decades before their mortgage is even paid off. We can't control what the federal government does to address climate change, but San Jose and Silicon Valley can lead the way in designing zero-carbon buildings and a zero-carbon future. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your contribution. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Liccardo. City council members, appreciate the time to speak. My name is Will Smith. I'm representing IBW Local 332. I represent 3,500 members that work here in Santa Clara County, many of them that live right here in San Jose. First of all, we want to speak in favor and support of the building reach code. California is leading the way in green technology, clean energy, energy efficiency. I recall installing lights with incandescent light bulbs. Then from there, they went to CFL, compact fluorescent light bulbs, and now they're at LED light bulbs. And so, the energy just keeps getting more efficient, the technology just keeps getting more efficient. And we want to make sure that San Jose is an example, because being the 10th largest city in the country and the 3rd largest city in the state, we can set the example by adopting this, for sure, and showing people the way. I'm a father, I have children. One day, I'll have grandchildren, and no hurry for the grandchildren, but one day they will be here, and I want to make sure we leave this place beautiful for them, because the steps that we take today is things that we can do to preserve our climate and our future for our children. So thank you very much for your time, and IBW definitely supports this.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. My name is Stet Samborn. I'm a principal of engineering at Smith Group. I'm also a licensed architect, and I've been working in the Bay Area for the last 15 years delivering all-electric buildings. So your cost-effectiveness study, if you actually look back 10 years ago, we could deliver those projects cost-effectively, net-zero energy, carbon-neutral 10 years ago. We work on a broad range of projects from affordable housing to complex labs and hospitals, and I can tell you, it's effective for all of them. So I would encourage the council to actually move more aggressively and cover all building types with the aggressive mandate to go more efficient if they're mixed fuel. To give you two recent case studies, we have a nine-story affordable housing project that's starting construction in San Francisco. Nine stories, everyone's scared of high-rise, nine stories, all-electric, affordable housing for cheaper than mixed fuel. We also completed the integrated genomics lab at Lawrence Berkeley Lab that just finished. That's an all-electric research lab. We just kicked off design for another project at LBNL, also all-electric, and it's a biological research lab. We can do all these building types as all-electric now, cost-effectively. And for the bioepic project, we just did a cost comparison. That project will save half a million dollars by removing gas from the building. Half a million dollars. You can pay for a lot of efficiency measures with half a million dollars. So I'd encourage the council to move even more aggressively, like the city of Berkeley and banning natural gas altogether. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Francesca Wall, and I'm here today on behalf of Tesla to express our support for the updated reach code proposal that was released on Friday, in particular on the EV readiness requirements for multifamily buildings. As you all may know, Tesla's mission is really to accelerate the world's transition to sustainable energy. So both as a manufacturer of electric vehicles and a provider of charging infrastructure, we bring a unique perspective to any discussion on EV readiness requirements for new buildings. Given the level of deployment today in San Jose of electric vehicles and the expected growth going forward, we're very excited to see San Jose take a leadership position in developing a reach code that incorporates additional EV readiness requirements for new construction. Charging where vehicles are already parked a majority of the day really provides the most optimal charging experience for EV drivers and the grid. Therefore, we support increasing access at apartments and commercial properties for driving long-term EV adoption. Cities across the country are looking at new EV readiness requirements, and most of them are looking at a minimum of 20% EV-ready. So if Seattle and Atlanta can do it, I'm confident San Jose will be able to implement this policy as well. As you all know and probably saw from our comment letter, we had expressed earlier concerns around the electrical panel around the electrical panel capacity requirements within the proposal, but those concerns have been mitigated by the updated REACH Code proposal, so we are supportive of that, and we thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Goff? Welcome. After our next speakers, Brett Anderson, John Fioreta, Brian Haberly, Dashal Leeds, and Ida Rose Sylvester.
Great, thank you. Hello, council. My name is Matthew Goff. I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club and our 16,000 members here in San Jose. We support this building electrification REACH Code. We know that building electrification is good for public health. Homes that have gas appliances, like gas stoves in them, are more likely to result in cases of childhood asthma and indoor air quality that would be illegal if found outdoors. We know that building with all-electric appliances is more affordable. As the studies have shown, single residency homes cost $5,000 more to build, and multifamily residence units cost $2,000 more to build if you install gas. We know that the climate crisis is real. We know that we have 10 years to act in order to stave off the worst effects of global warming, and we know that a gigantic chunk of our greenhouse gas emissions come from our buildings. And so this REACH Code as it stands is a good step in the right direction to move us off of gas and towards an all-electric future. What we need is San Jose to be a leader in the state of California. We need to show cities across the state that building electrification is viable and cost-effective and better for the city so that we can ultimately move entirely off gas. So we thank you for your leadership so far. We encourage you to take even the next step and follow in Berkeley's footsteps, but this is a big, important step in the right direction, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson? Welcome.
Hi, Brett Anderson from Palo Alto. So I'm a member of Carbon-Free Palo Alto, so we do a lot of lobbying in Palo Alto for all-electric building codes in Palo Alto. This is a great strategic move, I think. You know, all signs are pointing that the cost is going down of all-electric building, and the efficiency is going up, the functionality is going up. It's part of the smart grid build-out. It improves safety, health, productivity of your citizens, and it also addresses our climate crisis. It's one part of a strategy at the very beginning to get at the buildings, which is an enormous part of the emissions pie in our cities. Existing buildings are really important, too, because those things are not changing, and they cost a lot to retrofit. But we need to kick-start to the market, and a strong REACH Code backstopped with a look at potentially banning at the same time as Berkeley is doing. I saw this in the memo from the mayor, and this is what we're pushing in Palo Alto, is to, in parallel with passing the REACH Code now, which is an opportune moment, everyone's doing it in support with the CEC. The CEC is also monitoring what's going on with the cities. If they see enough demand, they're going to come out strong with very strong base code next round. But we need to follow up with the investigation and validation that a ban can be passed as soon as possible as well, so looking at that in 2020, as soon as 2020 as well. This is a very strong signal to the market, to the designers, but mostly to the supply chain. So the installers need to know that gas is going away, and they need to study the solutions that are available in all-electric to address our existing buildings. Business-as-usual is a very powerful motivation just to do the same old thing and install those gas appliances, but they last for years. Of course, the buildings last for years, and we need to get a signal, a strong signal out to the market, to those suppliers, installers, as well as the buyers, end-users of these buildings. So consumers, when they're considering upgrading their home heating system or their water heating system, if they know gas is going to be banned, gas is on its way out, they are going to think hard about what opportunities there are to go all-electric in their own homes. So part of what Palo Alto is trying to do is to make this a strong first step, but also bring some of those benefits and incentives to the existing buildings right away as soon as these things come into effect in 2020.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, John.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name is John Fioreta. I'm here to personally support the matter of 7.2, the REACH measure, and appreciate the mayor's leadership on this. I'm here as a representative of Citizens Climate Lobby on Measure 7.3, the climate emergency resolution. Specifically, we'd like to thank Councilwoman Davis for her efforts in getting this before you all. We support it, but we're hoping that after further review by staff, that the city will support HR 763, and we hope to be back sooner than later concerning that and working with staff on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Mr. Haberly?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Haberly. I'm a resident of San Jose, proud parent of three kids, and a volunteer with 350 Silicon Valley, the local affiliate of 350.org, the international climate organization started by Bill McKibben and seven college students fighting climate change around the world. Just want to make a couple of brief points and ask a question of you as well. The IPCC gave us at best about another 11 years to reduce CO2 levels globally by 45% from 2010 levels to 2030, if we're going to keep under that 1.5 C degrees Celsius temperature raise. That is a woefully short period of time, and frankly, a woefully short target for us to reach locally and globally. Many scientists believe if we're going to keep our temperature down, we need to be net-zero by 2025, net-zero. That's a really aggressive target, but something can be done if the political will is there. The United Nations has warned us that we'll have somewhere between 200 million and 1 billion climate refugees in the coming decades if we don't slow and reverse climate change. As stated earlier, San Jose is the 10th-largest city in America. I would ask the council, why are we only considering the low-hanging fruit of incentivizing electric building rather than requiring for all-new construction? At staff's own report, and I printed out one of the pages in the report, I note that we're lagging behind the cities of Gilroy, Milpitas, Morgan Hill, and others in their requirements. I would love to see San Jose be more aggressive and require all-new construction, as Oakland has done. I think we need to be banning gas in all-new construction, not just incentivizing electrification. Finally, just in closing, some of you have probably seen the hashtag #ExxonNew. #ExxonNew. Four decades ago, Exxon's own scientists warned their officers that climate change was real, was accelerating, and largely man-made due to the burning of fossil fuels. There are litigation going through the courts right now about how much Exxon knew and why they obfuscated, delayed, and had phony white papers written denying the reality of climate change. It was four decades ago when it would have been a lot easier to solve the climate change crisis we're facing today. I would ask the council, do we want to be known as San Jose New and have that be the hashtag in coming years if we didn't take all?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Dashal Leeds. I'm a conservation assistant with the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. I come to you in support of the mayor's memo, and also signed by city council members. I think it's a great step forward. I also think we can go further. I come to you also with breaking news. In 2021, the IPCC will release their next major report on climate change, which will replace the current UN projections. The first two of the new models were just released publicly today by the Institute Pierre Simon Le Place Climate Modeling Center in Paris. A quick summary, "The Earth is warming faster than we even thought before. Increased levels of CO2 in the atmosphere will warm the Earth's surface more and more easily than we previously thought as of yesterday." And this is a quote from the head of the institute. "With our two models, we see that the scenario known as SSP 1.2.6, which normally allows us to stay under 2 degrees Celsius, doesn't quite get us there. So the emergency is worse than we thought. We are really in a very, very serious crisis." And just to bring this back down to the local level, I think natural gas really is a poison, literally and metaphorically. It leaks into our homes, it leaks out of the ground, and poisons our atmosphere. Indoors, we breathe in carbon monoxide, nitrogen dioxide, formaldehyde. This is really, really toxic stuff, and it poisons us literally, and it poisons our hope for the future. We know we're in a crisis. We know it's less expensive to build all-electric. We know it's achievable. There is no reason we should be putting any more natural gas infrastructure into the ground. Any new gas infrastructure we build is a tragedy, and we should really avoid it at all costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Ida Rose Sylvester with the Fossil Free Buildings Campaign of Silicon Valley. Every one of us in this room has contributed to the climate crisis, and everyone in this room must work together to get us out of it, particularly for the sake of the youth in this room who speaks so eloquently and passionately about their future. Our impact on climate change is particularly true in Silicon Valley, where many of us fly a lot, drive many miles in gas-powered cars, work in large office complexes, design and build products that create industrial and end-of-life pollution, and live in homes filled with luxuries like gas fireplaces, all powered by fossil fuels. So I want to thank San Jose for taking this leadership position today to get us out of the situation, acknowledging its role in the crisis, and more importantly, acknowledging its role in fixing it. I'd like to thank the entire staff, Keri Brahmanov, James Sun, Ken Davies, and Sean Deniston, for their role in tireless work to create the REACH Codes over many, many iterations, and for their emphasis on public input. So thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Transportation and Environmental Committee, including Chair Dev Davies and Vice Chair Raul Perez-Paralis, and all of their staff who've worked so tirelessly with their thoughtful comments and questions last week, which helped us to get to where we are today, so thank you. Of course, I'd like to thank Mayor Sam Liccardo and Councilmembers Deep Carrasco, Paralis, and Davies who signed on to his memo. Thank you very much. And thank you to the entire council for discussing REACH Codes again and again, and also declaring a climate emergency later today. So thank you to all mentioned above, as well as Councilmembers Foley, Jimenez, Jones, and Comas. Thank you so much. This is a historical moment, but it's just the beginning. Today is the day that history will look back on the day we began to tackle climate change in San Jose in earnest. So to this end, please keep your aggressive schedule, particularly for banning gas. We need to end this dependence on fossil fuel for the health and economic security of our communities, the safety of our buildings, and the future of our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat Wilson, come on up, sir. Kat Wilson, followed by Karen Nelson, Diane Bailey, Pierre Del Fourche, Julie Ellingham. Hi.
Hi. Bruce Nagel, longtime resident of Silicon Valley and member of three different sustainability groups. The one thing I'd really like to have you leave with is the children and their effect on things. You had one speaker today who was very effective. I've heard a similar speaker in Mountain View. I've heard of five similar speakers in East Palo Alto. This is our future. We need to make sure that these people have a place to live that's as nice as what we have. We owe it to them to do that. Please leave with that one thought, and then we'll do the right thing for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome, Kat.
Hello, my name is Kat Wilson, and I wanted to just speak in support of the updated REACH Code and just take a moment to thank councilmembers Deep, Paralis, Carrasco, and Davies, and of course, the leadership of Mayor Liccardo for the memo on Friday and the stronger recommendations in the REACH Code. And also just wanted to thank staff for meeting with us over the past several weeks, and it really meant a lot to me, and I know to our whole group, that what we said was listened to, and it was very thoughtful, and I saw it reflected in the updated REACH Code, so I appreciate all of that. And I just ask the whole council to support the REACH Code. And lastly, one last thing, I would like to do whatever we can to have an all-electric San Jose in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Nelson.
I'm Karen Nelson, and I'm chair of the Climate Reality Santa Clara County Chapter, and actually, that chapter has many members that live and work in San Jose, including We're here to support what we consider to be the only viable solution, and that's the mayor's strengthened REACH Code proposal. We have to extend deep appreciation to the work of the mayor, council, and staff to have developed such a rigorous REACH Code. Your remarkable leadership that uses REACH Codes sets the stage for dramatically reduced emissions, and we realize that it will demonstrate to other jurisdictions around the country that communities can move us from climate crisis to climate restoration and move our children from fear to hope. The proposal put forward in the September 13th mayor and Transportation Environmental Committee memo recognizes we are in the last-chance moments with eyes wide open to the dangers and determination to protect our community and our world. Climate Reality enthusiastically supports the adoption of the September 13th memo with its proposed REACH Code and supporting actions, as we encourage you also to accelerate this momentous event with additional standards following that, as our climate emergency, soon to be declared, would suggest. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo, council members. My name is Pierre Del Fourche. I am a senior scientist with the Natural Resources Defense Council, where I lead our policy work on building decarbonization. Much has been said about the climate crisis. I won't go into the detail. I just want to commend the city for recognizing this crisis and taking action and committing to take action with this Climate Smart San Jose Plan and with considering the climate emergency declaration today, which I urge you to adopt. Today's proposed and strengthened REACH Code is an opportunity to put this REACH Code into action and to make it real, sorry, to put this plan into action and make it real. And I also strongly support the mayor's and council members' strengthened proposal. It is ambitious, yet it provides flexibility where needed to allow for a smooth transition. The message from many building professionals who have already switched to all-electric construction is clear. You've heard some of them today. With today's best design practices, all-electric buildings already cost less to build and to operate. And this is even before the market has even learned how to do it efficiently. Once the REACH Code provides policy certainty and scale, the market will adapt very quickly and further reduce costs. This will unleash an inherently more affordable way to build and operate a building, helping make housing more affordable in San Jose. This REACH Code is not just the right thing to do for the climate, it's also a smart policy for housing affordability and public health. Mr. Mayor and council members, California cities are currently making history by launching the next wave in clean energy, zero-emissions buildings. This REACH Code and the all-electric ordinance will place San Jose at the forefront of this movement while also benefiting the city's economy and residents' health and safety. Please vote aye on this REACH Code. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your work at the NRDC. Welcome. Ms. Bailey? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Liccardo and council members. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm with Menlo Spark. We're a member group of the Fossil Free Buildings in Silicon Valley Campaign alongside 20 other organizations. We're working to accelerate a phase-out of fossil fuel use in our homes and buildings throughout the valley, and we're here today in strong support of the REACH Codes for healthy, safe, and carbon-free homes and buildings throughout San Jose. We're really grateful, Mayor Liccardo, for your leadership, as well as the hard work of the four council members and the staff who contributed to the memo last Friday that was calling for the 10 improvements to the REACH Code. We hope each of these will be adopted today, cementing San Jose's role as a true climate leader, and we really need courageous climate leaders like you right now. As the LA Times editorial board put it this weekend, "The changing climate is no longer an abstract threat lurking in our distant future. It is upon us. We feel it, we see it. In our longer and deeper droughts, and our more brutal hurricanes, and raging, hyper-destructive wildfires, and with that comes a new urgency and a new opportunity to act." This week, a new media project kicked off. It's called Covering Climate Now. It's a global collaboration of more It's a global collaboration of more than 250 news outlets working to strengthen coverage of the climate story. And along with the growing coverage of the climate crisis in the media has come growing public concern. Two new polls show that climate change has increasingly become an urgent issue for a majority of Americans, and the youth are rising up too. So your timing is great. This can't come soon enough. We look forward to continuing to work with staff and interested stakeholders to ensure progress towards fossil-free buildings for San Jose. Every new home and building is an opportunity to break the cycle of fossil fuel dependency that has polluted our air, created a major safety hazard, and contributed an outside share of impacts to our climate. And it doesn't have to be that way. All-electric homes and buildings are cheaper to build, as you've heard from so many experts today and throughout this process. They lower our utility bills, and they create healthier, more resilient communities. Any steps that the city can take to work with developers to avoid gas use would be much appreciated, including a technical roundtable suggested by Mothers Out Front. Let's keep working together towards a future that is fossil-free, and that future starts right now. Please adopt the strongest REACH code, including the mayor's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie Ellingham, followed by Ruth Marino. And I may have misread this. It's B-O-Y-A-N, Boyan, or perhaps B-O-Y-G-N? If you're here, feel free to come down. Hi.
Hello. Hi, I'm Julie Ellingham. I'm providing brief comments today on behalf of the members of San Jose Community Energy Advocates. We're a local group that was key to the launch of San Jose Clean Energy and continue to advocate on local topics and related topics. Thank you, staff, and the TNE committee members, and the mayor, and those who co-signed his memo for responding to your community and recognizing that this is a powerful opportunity not to be missed. Our local members of our group agree with many of the speakers today and are really grateful to them for their expertise. A strong REACH code is important because, one, the building code is a powerful driver for achieving many of the city's climate-smart goals, will develop San Jose's clean tech economy, and lead to local job growth. Two, decisions made now regarding buildings and EVs will structurally set us on a path to safer, healthier, and more affordable homes and buildings. This is really a key moment. We believe it's essential that San Jose adopt a REACH code that isn't just, doesn't just encourage a gradual move away from gas in buildings, but is strong enough to actually drive very high levels of building electrification and preparation for the EV transition in all new buildings starting in January 2020. As we see at the mayor's memorandum of 9/13 shows, bold leadership toward achieving those goals in a cost-effective and flexible way that will maximize results, and we hope you'll support this recommendation. All-electric buildings clearly are a good investment economically, socially, environmentally. We encourage and support you in taking bold and innovative action now to enable those huge benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marino, welcome.
Hi. My name is Ruth Marino, and I'm also with San Jose Community Energy Advocates. We hope that, as Julie said, that you will approve the REACH codes today. But as you know, that there is much more to do. I'd also ask you to approve the climate emergency declaration. And I'd like to call out Resolution Number 7. Today, in the L.A. Times, the chief investment officer for the University of California, which holds $80 billion in investments, said that by the end of the month, they will be fully divested of fossil fuels. He also said that they stopped investing in fossil fuels four years ago. And although we environmentalists would love to see divestment, he said that the reasons are not environmental, although they do have sustainability goals for their investments. He said that the reasons are financial and that they are looking, as you wrote in your resolution, to invest in new energy sources. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Thanks to everybody in the community who came to speak and who has been invested in this effort. I know we've had a lot of community input. Really appreciate staff's work to take all that input and create a really positive step here for us. In addition to everybody on staff who work so hard, I just want to thank Scott Green and Anhela Banyas, who worked very hard in putting that memorandum together for us. And thank council members Paralis, Deep, Carrasco, and Davies for their partnership on that memorandum. First, I just want to make it clear that, you know, I recognize that there are lots of cities that are considering this and moving in various ways. I think we do have a unique responsibility as the largest city to do so, both to be bold, but also to recognize that we're a city that is building at larger scale than perhaps Menlo Park, for example. And some other cities may not be building a lot of high-rise, may not be providing the capacity for housing, for example, that we are. And so we have dual responsibilities here, and I appreciate that everyone has tried to work carefully to see how we can do both. That is fulfill our responsibility on climate as well as responsibility for housing and to be the big city. And we are now going to be the largest, I hope, with a favorable vote, the largest city in the country to move forward with the electrification of all new residential buildings, up to three stories as well as a significant push, I think, in much of our other construction. One of those items is, you'll see in the memorandum, paragraph 1B relates to wood frame construction up to seven stories. And James, I appreciate the work of yourself in the Building Department on this effort. Obviously, the concern they had animated us in putting this in, I recognize the state has this sort of odd delineation of what is residential and what's non-residential and cutting it off. I think it's three stories. Is that right? Obviously, for us, the sweet spot of housing is up to seven. We know that that's something that wood frame, that builders will build. High-rise is much more difficult right now. And I guess the question is, is there any impediment, given the way the state has created this division in terms of what's residential, non-residential, for us to create an exception to go up to seven stories if we wanted to electrify everything up to seven?
One good example would be looking at, we do have a lot of podium-type buildings in San Jose.
Yeah.
So usually, two stories would be a concrete structure. Then above will have like four-to-five-story wood buildings. So in this case, if we, what would be the wood number of stories would be calculating from the top of the podium. So what would be two, example would be five on the top. So it would be five wood structures, not quite seven.
And I know that we had, I know an architect talked about a project he did in San Francisco. I know that there are, I believe, we're doing one on Alum Rock now. That is a nonprofit builder's building that's all-electric. But I understand that there is a challenge with, for many builders, around water heaters. And I'm just trying to understand, do we think that's a challenge with high-rise? Or is that also a challenge with mid-rise at six or seven stories?
I would say both, because if you look at the podium, the example I just mentioned would be five and two. So typical podium-type, the trend that we have seen so far is that water heater, they were pretty dominant, that they all use gas. Individual water heater potentially, but that would be cost a little bit more. For high-rise, central boiler system would be very common, because that would be most cost-effective way to boil the water at this point. So if I explain this way, for podium, typical about 10% to 20% would be a heat pump, which is electric. And high-rise, about less than 10% would be a heat pump, because the technique is not quite there yet. So in other words, it's about 90% would be a central boiler.
Okay. So the direction from the memo, if this is approved, would be for us to come back in January and take a closer look at that to see if we can get to all-electric at the mid-rise level, which I hope we can. I just like to understand the costs and clearly have that conversation in a public way, and hopefully we can get there. I know an issue was raised around the amperage for electric vehicle charging. And there's a supplemental memo out on page three that described some of the decision-making that staff went through. And I know that Tesla and others would love to see us go to 32 amps, I believe, for space or something along those lines. And I know we have a different definition for EV-ready versus EV-capable and what amperage we're requiring. Could you describe a little bit about what you know about what it would require in terms of the electrical service sizing and the grid infrastructure to go to the level of amperage that I think that some in the industry would like? Sean?
So one of the things that we encounter with capacity on any building is that the capacity sizes, so kind of the size of the wire that comes into your building, it's not real granular. You can have big chunks that you go up. And it's the same thing if you have onsite transformers. And so sometimes there's quite a bit of capacity available, and sometimes there's only a little bit of capacity available. So it's hard to say specifically, well, this would be the additional cost, because it's going to vary from building to building. But if we are looking at going from eight amps on the circuit to 40 amps, I mean, you can see that that's five times the amperage, especially if you want to achieve that on, you know, close to 100% of the spaces. That, we do begin to see a pretty big impact on the load size of the building, especially since we have to design as if all of those spaces are charging at the same time. But we designed parking lots for Black Friday, not for Monday morning. And so, you know, that usage doesn't always line up. Having that capacity does make the retrofit in the future far easier. They're absolutely right about that. But trying to reserve the capacity now has real cost and grid implications now as well, which is why that eight amps was chosen. So I think that those are kind of the considerations that were going in. And the focus from the staff recommendation was really based around the primary cost of retrofit, which is that retrenching, digging into a parking lot that you've already created. That's the primary cost, and that's what the definition really addresses, while adding some capacity, also recognizing that, you know, load management, once we get this many EVs on our grid, load management is probably going to be a necessity just to make it work. And recognizing that that might be part of the future. But increasing the capacity does mean easier retrofits in the future.
Right. And just to understand the distinction or what it means in terms of the user, I'm electric car, my wife drives one too. We plug it in at home. I assume, you know, for charging overnight, that's basically an eight amp. It's for the super-fast charging that you would need, the higher amperage?
It's really for the fast, not for the super-fast charging, because that's an entire different class of chargers. Those are DC-based. It's a lot of amperage going in. You know, instead of going from zero to 100 in four to six hours, you're talking about doing zero to 80 in 30 minutes. But for the faster Level 2 charging, you know, the, quite frankly, for a lot of users, if they're charging overnight, Level 1, just a regular outlet, is enough. You need the Level 2 to get, if you want to get more charging, say, I went to a store, and I want to plug in while I'm at the store, and I want to get some good mileage to make sure I can get all the way home. That's what it's really used for.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And then I believe Mr. Haberly raised the issue about the chart and the comparison in San Jose to other cities and where we are on the spectrum. And I believe the chart he was referring to is the one that's reproduced in the staff memo. That doesn't reflect where we would be if the memorandum that five of us sign would be approved. Is that fair to say?
The spectrum chart does not. You would find yourself on the far right, I believe, or greener end of that.
Okay. So just to be clear, I believe what Mr. Haberly was referring to was the proposal in one set of memoranda, but not the proposal that the five council members, myself, signed on. So thank you for answering all my questions. I think there are many good questions that were raised by the community that came to me as I was listening. I know there will be many more as we work through this, and this will be an iterative process, I'm sure.
Just one more point of clarification on Recommendation 2 in your memo. When we put our first draft out, that was based on essentially final draft CEC study guidelines. That was, I understand, was finalized after that. So the language may want to refer to the most recent version.
Okay. So I'd be happy to suggest to the maker of the motion that be revised. I believe, recall, staff would also like to adjust the reporting date from March of 2020 to the date in which you come back for a climate smart update to the TNE committee. Is that right?
Thank you. If we could just align them with either the fall or spring climate smart updates, that'll make us better able to consolidate.
Okay. Could I suggest to the maker of the motion that all those reporting dates, when we would come back, would be aligned to either the spring or fall reporting date for climate smart, whoever that maker of the motion might be? And then I believe, Ken, you also had some other items that you read earlier. So I guess we'll maybe repeat that the time the motion's made. Great. Councilmember Comas?
Thank you, and thank you for the staff report. Thank you for everybody to come out and testify on this issue. And I want to start by saying I agree with the whole goal set of this and the emergency declaration. I'll be supporting that later. But I do have some concerns about how we went about reaching these REACH goals. Let me start with Slide 15, where you said you reached out to 65 stakeholders. And I'm not clear what you mean by stakeholders. Are they like the people in the audience, or are you actually talking to ADU manufacturers, manufacturers of high-rise, manufacturers of dwelling units?
So you'll recall, we had our Building Performance Ordinance through council last December. We had a lot of building owners and property owners involved in that process. We started our list out with that and vetted it through several departments to see who else we should have on there. And then we did go out to the public in form of neighborhood associations, over 200. Didn't get a lot of uptake from those groups, just because I think they live in a building already that's built. So new construction wasn't a concern there. But that was, there were EV charging infrastructure companies there, environmental advocates, building owners, affordable housing managers. The list went like that.
You know, my main goal is not to criticize who we reached out to. It's just I wanted to get a sense of whether we're actually going to help the problem or hurt the problem by creating new regulations and new requirements for builders. Every time, it seems like we put on regulations here seemingly about once a quarter, and we give developers new hurdles to jump through, and it actually makes things more expensive usually. And I know in your presentation, on, I think, Slide 20 or 21, it says that you actually have cost savings with building these. I talked to four developers before I came to the city council meeting, and they absolutely disagreed with the assertion that they're going to save building with these regulations. And I just want to question you that, because my whole goal is to not increase the price of housing so that people will live or go to other areas, develop housing there, and then all of a sudden, their populations are driving and causing and exacerbating the pollution by using cars. So I want to know what their discrepancy is. I talked to Barry Swenson, I talked to several other ones, and I know a couple of them were high-rise, and we're not talking about high-rise. But I did talk to several mid-rise people, and they're concerned about these requirements.
Yes, thank you. We heard those kinds of claims frequently, and that did influence staff's proposals somewhat. But we were unable to get sort of a comprehensive feedback in the form of a spreadsheet or here, my normal cost compared to what it would appear to be under an all-electric ordinance. And so the numbers were never presented to us in a way that we could address. So we've heard the claims, but I think when we look at it and we look at what the state study has provided, we're confident that without adding that gas service, without running that pipe, adding those meters, running pipe throughout a building, that the city... running that pipe, adding those meters, running pipe throughout a building, that the cost, intuitively, it makes sense that it would be lower. You just have less that you're constructing.
Ken, could you also add maybe some of the confusion early on about the cost difference between kind of the base code changes and then the adds that we're talking about?
Yeah, so the building base code is upgraded every three years, where, so that has a lot of cost increases embedded in the base code before we even talk about electrification. Most of that landed on single-family low-rise because the state added requirement for solar panels to actually be installed. So there were costs there. But some of the other misunderstandings we heard that were presented to us anyway were that we were proposing a retrofit scenario where we were asking building owners to go in, take out all gas-fired equipment, and put in electric, which obviously would be quite a bit more expensive. But we're just addressing new construction here and asking them to install less in the form of gas.
Well, I appreciate that, and I understand that some of these builders didn't, maybe didn't have time to sit with you and create a spreadsheet on what it would cost to build something with all-electric versus something that, the way that they do things now. But they talked to me about the need for larger, I mean, honestly, I don't know, I don't know what I don't know. And all I can tell you is that I would feel more comfortable if we delayed this and delayed this entire vote until we understood that. Because again, I don't want to exacerbate the problem of finding enough housing. It's expensive to live here, and if developers aren't going to develop properties because of codes, then it's going to exacerbate our housing problem and not help us. And it may exacerbate our environmental problems, because more people will have to drive further to get to their jobs. So that's the thinking there. They were talking to me about the necessity for added transformers, which are very expensive just to build a water boiler. Again, I don't even know what a water boiler is, okay? But the fact that they're concerned about the cost of building out multiple transformers and working with PG&E to have that excess capacity threw up a red flag for me. And I don't know if you can explain that, or if we can provide other, you know, there's nobody here in the audience that I can ask this question to, and I would have loved to have asked a builder this question.
I think we still do have a couple builders in the audience.
Do we? Okay. All right. I mean, I wouldn't mind understanding the transformer issue if someone would explain that to me, because they were talking about 1,200 volts and 400 amps and all that stuff.
Thank you for the chance. So, the issue is actually very much building by building, and very specific to the type of building that is under construction. There is, when we do go to an all-electric building, we do need more electrical capacity for that building. So I'm not going to stand here and tell you that we're going to invent electricity on-site with no capacity. So we do bring on more capacity. And as the gentleman mentioned, that threshold where you're at, where you might have to upgrade your transformer or bring on an additional ground, you know, vault-mounted transformer, is very much project-dependent. So if your building is already, I would say, designed to the point where you're right at the max load of your transformer, you may have to bring on another in-ground vault. But I will say that in general, because of state mandated changes, we're already pushing buildings into that next category because of state requirements on electrification and EV charging. So this particular change, in my opinion, isn't drastically changing that. And when you look at just that cost alone, you're failing to understand the actual savings of not doing a PG&E connection for gas. And so I know there's a gentleman from PG&E here speaking on behalf. That connection cost is tremendous. So just have, pulling in that utility and the risk to your timeline for construction of having a second major utility coming into your site is usually far outweighed by the incremental cost increase of adding, say, one more vault to a mid-rise, say, a mid-rise project.
Yes, but you do have PG&E connection costs for electricity too, right?
Right.
Because they have to bring in the electricity.
Yeah, so that incremental change in costs, going from, say, a medium-sized service to a slightly larger service, that increase from the electrical side is far smaller than the savings of not connecting to gas at all.
So this is the kind of information that I wouldn't, would have preferred to have during the presentation, and I would love to see these things before I vote on something that, you know, we have one person who's definitely on board with this effort, but I only called four people, and all four people said it's going to raise cost. There was no one that I talked to that said it was going to decrease cost, which I thought it was. When I originally thought about this issue, I thought, hey, you only have to pipe in one thing, which is, hey, that should be a 50% savings. And that's the way I looked at it as a numbers guy. But that's not what was explained to me. You know, and I kind of, when we're exempting, for example, hardship exemptions on low-income units and things like that, it makes me think, if we're exempting them, that means that the cost is higher. And so I start to question the logic. If the cost is lower, then we should be not exempting anyone.
Yeah, regarding the affordable housing case, the thinking behind that was that they're already giving up building additional living units in order to meet the city's parking space requirements. And so could we forgive some of those, or, in order to get the charging infrastructure, could they do less? Because they already don't have enough people filling those spaces. So that's what we, why we were trying to help that particular group out.
And another way to look at this is that upsizing transformer, one thing that we have to, trying to prevent from cost increase is to have the eight amp load management, so it doesn't have to charge or 32 amp for all the EV spaces. So that also helps. And also cost, the chart that we saw, the numbers does not include EVs. So maybe our developers are kind of thinking from that direction, adding on EVs and charge, fully charging capability of the transformer, that would cost high. But our proposal with eight amps actually reduce the cost, and that could be kind of misconception from the developers as well.
I appreciate that, and you were only talking about the exemption from, for charging stations requirement here, not the entire building. So, do you build any ADUs?
Like one-off ADUs in backyards?
Yes.
Only at my own house, but no, otherwise, no.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. I wanted to ask you also, we are no longer going to exempt ADUs, and did we reach out to any ADU contractors to get their take? Is it going to be, I mean, we have spent almost a year decreasing regulations, decreasing costs, so we can incentivize ADUs. Are we going the opposite direction now?
Councilmember Camus, maybe I can just offer perspective. I received two calls or email, one email, one call from two different homeowners who wanted to build ADUs. They were furious that they had to install gas lines under the existing city code. Because of the additional cost of installing those lines.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what I, logically, this is the way I thought of it to begin with. I thought, wow, this is going to be saving a lot of money. And then when I called these developers, they scared me. So I want to be unscared again.
Counselmember, we're happy to run through some of the numbers again in the slides, but, you know, really relying on the expertise that Bloomberg brought to the table, Sean being one of them, really our analysis shows there's not a net increase. There's certainly misunderstandings in the market, and it's unfortunate that some folks, looks like, didn't make time to participate. But we did have extensive outreach and spoke with a number of builders. And even if you don't consider the value that reducing our greenhouse gas emissions have in the equation, the dollars indicate that there are initial and ongoing cost savings. But we do feel that we need to make progress in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. And, you know, personally, if there was a nominal cost to that, or maybe more significant cost to that, I would be supportive of that, although that's not what we're suggesting with our draft today. But we feel confident that the numbers show there's not material cost increases.
Well, you know, Carrie, I know you can afford it. Many of us can afford the extra monies, you know, and that's not what I'm talking about. I want to make sure that people are able to afford to live in the things that we construct here. And if you go to slide number 21, the added, maybe I'm misunderstanding this slide, but we're looking at an increase in cost of utilities, not a decrease in cost of utilities per unit.
Yeah, as we noted there on that slide, that is a snapshot in time now, and we then discussed the anticipated and significant increased costs for gas that we foresee coming very soon. So that that number that you see in the middle column there is going to trend downward over time relative to a mixed-fuel building. You'll save money at that point, and these devices that are being installed in all-electric construction are also more efficient. So that would remain true over time.
Well, I don't know that I agree with your assertion about, because PG&E is renewing both gas and electric infrastructure, and after those fires, I think most of the money that's going to be spent is on electric infrastructure and ensuring that that doesn't go bad as well. I think both energy costs are going to go up and not down, but it looks to me that gas is going to be.
Councilmember Camus, if I could add to that, too. Our clean energy department did look at that issue. PG&E does project their long-term rates, both gas and electric, over a 10-year period. Both are projected to go up. Gas is projected to go up at a higher rate than electric. And I think that's a little bit of what Ken is referring to. So our staff in the community energy department has done some review of that information.
Okay. All right. So, look, I'm very supportive of this, and I appreciate you clarifying a lot of this information. I know we're voting on this again in October. It would make me feel more comfortable if we would delay this decision until October so that we can talk to an ADU developer, so that we're not hindering the development of ADUs. That would make me feel more comfortable, or maybe we could segregate out ADUs until we can get an answer that we're not going to slow down production of ADUs that I'm satisfied with.
All right. Anything further, Councilmember Camus?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all the community members who came out today and who spoke. And I want to thank the staff for all your work on this and for being so responsive to the discussion that we had at TNE last week. I'm not going to belabor any of those points. I really appreciate you putting out the supplemental memo, having an extra meeting. That's really, really helpful, and I appreciate it. As many of you know, I'm very big on data, and that's why I'm supported and signed on to both the memos, the REACH Code as well as the Climate Emergency Resolution, because the data about climate change is overwhelming, and we need to do everything we can to fight it and to prepare for the future, or as we call it in the Climate Smart Plan, the Good Life 2.0. So in terms of the REACH Code, I said this during the press conference, and I think it bears repeating. San Jose has always been at the forefront of both environmental stewardship and innovation. And the REACH Code memo that we put out, the mayor and my colleagues and I put out, builds on that history and builds for the future. I am proud that our proposal will help create clean tech local jobs. And that's why I know, I understand, Councilmember Camus, we can't see so far down the future to know that we're doing exactly the right thing. Luckily, we don't only have this one bite at the apple, but what we're doing is helping to shift the mindset for builders who maybe didn't take the time yet. And we do have builders who say it's cheaper per unit, and we look at the first cost, it's cheaper for the builders to build all-electric. And so we're allowing the capability of still running gas if they want to, but we are also requiring in the memo, and I'm very proud that we have this in there, that we, from the amended version, that we're requiring electrification ready. Because I think we all know with the explosion that happened in San Bruno and the subsequent audit of the infrastructure, that the gas infrastructure is woefully inadequate and dangerous. It is probably going to be, my best guess is it's probably going to be cheaper for PG&E to just not do that anymore than it is to upgrade all of that infrastructure. So I also just want to talk a little bit about the resolution, especially item, I just want to talk about item number four and the federal legislation, HR 763, that is in the House right now. It was introduced in January. So the thing that's really important about that measure, and hopefully that measure or something similar will pass, is that it captures the true cost of carbon emissions. And so what that does is, when we capture that true cost, it provides an incentive for us to move to cleaner technologies. And then with HR 763, it provides a dividend to households to mitigate the hardships during our transition to a cleaner economy. So I think we didn't put that, we just said carbon-based fuel taxes. We didn't talk about the dividend in the redlined version, and I'm a little bit concerned about that, that the dividend isn't in there in the redlined version. So I'd like to make sure we have something in there about mitigating the hardship to households during the transition to a cleaner economy. Mayor, would you like us to move these separately, or can we do it in one?
You know, perhaps it would be better separately, I'd suggest. So, why don't we take 7.2 first?
Okay, great. So I will move the memo authored by the mayor and councilmembers, Peralis, Jep, Carrasco, and myself. Thank you. And then we'll include the suggested revisions by staff for item number two to refer to the most, was it, to refer to the most recent California Energy Commission Cost Effectiveness Study? Do they have a new study that came out?
Yeah, it finalized a little bit after our first draft was released.
Okay. And then the other item I had written down was for item number six, reporting in spring of 2020, along with the Climate Smart update, as opposed to specifying the month. Is that right?
Yeah, we're usually here in October and May each year.
Okay. So that's to TNE, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And were there other items that I missed?
We just had the, some definition around recommendation 4D on the hardship, that we would be using the permanent supportive housing definition under state law and the AMI definition per municipal code. Hardship exception would be based on 2019 base code, which is a cap of $400 per dwelling unit.
Great. So we will include that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davis for the motion, and the second was Councilmember Foley. Well, I'll come back to the motion in a moment. Let's go on to council comment. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. This is really exciting to have this come before us. As a mother and listening to the mothers out front and listening to Ariana talk about her perspective as an eighth grader and challenging us, could she have been more articulate? Was there anyone more articulate than she was? It's incumbent upon us to adopt these REACH Codes and reach for the future, reach as far as we possibly can. Did I understand you correctly that we already, the state has adopted base codes that we have to implement by, or developers have to implement by January 2020 already? And our REACH Codes are just extending beyond that? That's, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, developers already have to make these changes per state law. What we're saying is, we just want them to go one step further or a few steps further, and that is installing EV capacity more in their developments. All-electric buildings make sense. We heard from one developer. I haven't made calls from other developers, but knowing that they don't have to put in gasoline, gasoline, that would be dangerous. Put in gas lines makes sense, that it would be cost savings to them. I suspect that, although I don't have any data on this either, but to your point, Councilmember Camus, I don't think it's going to I don't think it's going to have any effect negatively on ADUs. I think it will have the opposite effect, that allowing for only all-electric installation on an ADU will simplify things and make it cheaper for folks. I do have, so I'm all-in for this memo. And I have told several people that if I could have signed on the memo, I would have. But you already had your five in place, and that's that. So I am tremendously in supportive of it. I do have some concerns about the resiliency of our electrical grid as it relates to PG&E. And this will put, of course, an increased load. And I worry about that. So I, as a council member, there's other, we should look at other ways to create a more stable electrical grid for us and do something down the line for that. But that is my biggest concern about going all-electrical is the stability of the electrical grid, with all due respect to our representative here from PG&E. Other, most of my questions have been asked regarding the water heaters. I noticed a comment about incentives. What do incentives look like? How do you envision an incentive being rolled out?
So the feedback would be, as you electrify, our Clean Energy utility is gaining more revenue. They can then, instead of turning that into profit shares, cycle that back into the community in the form of additional electrification incentives for existing buildings, for example. We also see a lot of money coming into play through the Cal EV IP rebate that San Jose Clean Energy was just awarded in terms of charging infrastructure. PG&E's got some money coming in for that as well. So that money's starting to arrive, AB 1477, state money, additional state money for electrification incentives. So it's all starting to arrive, kind of really nice timing with this.
So do you see incentives being offered to current homeowners who might be installing solar panels, for instance, or going all-electric into their homes, converting?
Some of those incentives for solar panels have gone away. They are there for lower income. We do have a program on the ground right now for the heat pump water heaters for existing homes that folks can apply for, get the water heating unit as well as an upgrade to their electric panel. So it's a very generous package that could help you get ready for EV charging and other things at the home.
Okay, regarding the water heater, I know most of us have gas water heaters, and that's because it's cheaper to run gas right now. So is it possible there might be an incentive to convert to electric because it's going to be more expensive for someone initially to start using electricity for their water heaters?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, that's exactly what I was referring to. That's the program that we have right now. So you would get the cost of the water heating, the electric water heating unit covered, as well as permitting fees and any needed upgrades to your electric panel.
Okay, thank you. I thank you for the community members who were here. I thank you for my council members who had the foresight to author this memo. We are the 10th largest city, but we are leading the pack in this effort. And it makes me so proud to be a member of this city council as we move forward on this issue. And I thank you for, to the staff, for all that you have done to bring us to this point. So thank you very much.
Hey, councilmember. Councilmember Pross?
Thank you. And thank you to my colleagues. I'll echo some of the sentiment to all of our community members who came out today to speak actually on both of these items, but I know will be taking up this first vote initially. And to staff, and Carrie, I think I'll try to sort of right-size some of what you were saying in your response to Councilmember Camus. I don't think you were talking about your own personal ability to pay for something. You were talking about if indeed there is, you know, say, an incremental increase in cost to a developer, that that in itself would still be worth it when you're talking about the benefits of the GHD reduction. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, councilmember.
Okay, so that's fine, there's no need to reiterate anymore. But I really want to thank you for your response because I think the reality is, is that actually indeed, that this will be overall a cost savings, a cost benefit. And there may be some, you know, outlier scenarios where somebody does see an increase. And certainly, we know that there is that reality, which is why we reference that, right, in regards to looking at all-still buildings above the seven stories, right? I mean, that's, we have recognized that and heard that from you. But at the same time, we even have, right, a developer in the building, right, that's saying, hey, I do this today. And certainly, there may be, again, some one-off scenarios where you see some increase in cost. But when you actually weigh that out to what some of the cost savings may be, even in itself, some of those may even out or even go into the benefit of the developer and the cost of their actual development. But I really, just reiterating what you said, I appreciate that because that was my sentiment exactly, was we're not, we're not doing this for the sole reason of cutting costs to developers. That's not what my goal is, right? And so I think you made that reference, and I just, I appreciate it. And I think that is, happens to be a benefit in addition to, as we've seen the technologies for development, like all-electric buildings go down, right, in cost, that that's just an added benefit. But the reality is, what we're pushing here is we're pushing for GHD reductions. We're pushing to try and save the extinction of all the living things on this planet. And so much, much bigger goals that we have in place here. And that's why we are, you know, excited to be doing what we're doing today. Why, I was happy to co-sign with our mayor. And we had a successful press conference earlier today to show that, you know, that we are proud to be the biggest country, or the biggest city in the country today adopting these REACH codes and striving for even further. As we know, we have another opportunity in a couple of years. So for me, you know, I really appreciate the work that went into this. Appreciate, Mayor, your opportunity to work with you and staff as well for kind of hearing us out in some of the comments and concerns that we did have in committee and taking in the stakeholder input. I personally have not heard from any downtown developers outside of the high-rise development concerns. So I don't know if the message was a little different that Johnny was receiving, but I haven't heard any of that personally. So I also don't think we will have a major concern. You know, the opportunities have been there for these individuals to speak up if they wanted to in a committee meeting or even here, other spaces, right? And that has not happened. So I'm not at all nervous. I think that for both reasons, this is absolutely the right direction to be going as a city. And so excited to be supporting this, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mas?
First and foremost, thank you for everyone coming out. Very much appreciate you being here. Really, I think it makes a world of difference hearing you express how important an issue this is. I suspect that if we had this in the early evening, late evening, that more people would be out here expressing support as well. Thank you to staff for all the work. I realize that we're first going to be taking the REACH Code and then the Climate Emergency. I certainly wasn't part of the signing of the memo on the REACH Code, but I support it. Climate Emergency, certainly I signed on to that, and I support that. You know, one of the things that comes to mind to me is, I heard some of the comments earlier, is really that I think some of the concerns expressed earlier, certainly, they're tied and related to what's happening here in San Jose with regard to developers that may or may not like this. But I think that unfortunately, it's a microcosm, what we've seen at the federal level that really has prevented this country from solving this crisis and moving it forward in a good direction. And so I'm very much proud of the fact that this, our city continues to lead the way while in Washington, they're in effect in gridlock. I also very much appreciate the fact that when our state government, as progressive as it is, suggests that we should jog towards a particular goal, towards a goal of a greener future, that we decide to run instead of jog. And so I'm very proud to be voting for this today. And I very much appreciate the memo and everything that was said. Although I do have one question. And that is tied to something that Councilmember Camus was asking with regard to the fees and, or the cost of development. I know that the sense I got, and as you all know, you wrote the memo, and there's a lot of information in there. And so some of the questions that have been asked clarified some of my sentiments and questions that I had. But one of the things that stood out to me is I think on a few occasions, it was cited that costs would, maybe down the line, maybe immediately, but would be lower, right? And so with that, I'm trying to reconcile that with, and I'm going to support the memo, but it's still a question that I think is very important to ask. And I'm trying to get my iPad to open it up. So I think it was in the memo that was put forward, I think it was number eight. So as it relates to the cost being lower, and then number eight in the memo, it says, "Direct staff to return to council by March 2020 as part of the Climate Smart San Jose update with options for potential fee and tax reductions." And so I'm curious as to, I'm trying to reconcile that with the fact that we're saying it's going to be, you know, lower cost. And so I'm curious as to your perspective on that.
Certainly, anything that reduces city fees if there's not commensurate reduction in staff time needed, you know, we'd need to evaluate. And so this is something that with planning, building code enforcement, we'll work together to explore. Are there efficiency options that make sense? But we didn't have anything in mind.
Okay. You're in effect, taking the direction as it relates to being in the memo and bringing it back.
If I could, I just want to make sure we're talking. I think on number eight, the cost issue has to do with high-rise construction, which I think is a slightly different equation here than what we're talking about in terms of what's moving forward here. So I think, as was explained, when it comes to high-rise, certainly, there probably is a cost factor here involved in terms of the central boiler approach versus all-electric.
Okay, all right. Okay, I feel comfortable with that. I was just trying to wrap my head around exactly how to reconcile that with what was said. But I appreciate it. I'll be supporting the memo, very proud to do so. I'm very proud of our city and think we're moving in a good direction. I think that even if there are some economics consequent to some of these decisions, I think the moral imperative is to do the right thing for future generations, for our children, to make sure we leave them with a world that they deserve. Thank you.
Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out and expressing your thoughts and your support. When I first, we got out of a closed session earlier this morning, and I saw one of the advocates, Linda, and she had her sign that her daughter had given her and was all ready. And so that means that her daughter took the time yesterday to do this and voice her vision and represent her generation through this expression. Linda hadn't done her sign yet just yet. But the next generation has, and they just get it, you know? They're just, they're pushing us, right? And I really like what you all had to say about reaching a new San Jose. And sometimes we have to reach further than what we anticipated. And so I like that there's always this very natural dynamic and sometimes pressure to do more, right? And I think that was part of the conversation that we had last week at TNE, when folks actually wanted more. And I'm really proud to support this memo that the mayor and my colleagues have produced because it is part of doing more and taking it one step further. And as a first-time council member in my first year, I was so honored to be part of this, of the San Jose Clean Energy. And I had a lot of meetings with Julian Ellingham and Ruth Marino, and who really were stewards in helping me learn about San Jose Clean Energy and continue to be just huge advocates for our community. And so I'm just so proud that you continue to make sure that we do the right thing. So thank you for that. And thank you, staff, for listening to all of our recommendations from last week. I know that you have a time limit, you have a timeline. And yet you made sure that you had another opportunity for folks to come in and to voice whatever it is that they needed to say. And so I appreciate that. Not everybody has the luxury of doing that. And I really thank you for listening and for making sure that our community continues to contribute to the vision of San Jose. And so I'm absolutely supportive of the memo and the motion on the floor. And so thank you, everybody, for your hard work. I can't wait when San Jose Clean Energy also has some of those programs, right, when we get up and running more than, further than nine months. And we have, we can have some additional programs for homeowners because I realize this is all new construction, right? And I get that, you know, we have to do this now so we don't do anything retrofitting. But we do have to take a step back with our homeowners and also do our part, right? And so now I know that the boiler, that the electrical boiler program is out there. I'm going to absolutely let my residents know and as a resident myself, take advantage of it as well because it's doing our part, right? We're not going to retrofit our homes, but we can definitely do our part to contribute into a better world. So thank you so much for all of your work and good luck in this next step, and we'll see you back.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Arenas's last point because we're dealing with the shoreline right now of new development. There's still that ocean of what's already existing. And that's a much bigger bite. And certainly, we all hope that San Jose Clean Energy will continue to do well and will have some dollars to reinvest in the community for those retrofits. That'll be so important for us in the future. As I was sitting up here, I received a text from Scott on our team about some questions that were raised, actually, by mothers out front and in response to a concern that Councilmember Camus raised. And the suggestion that that organization had made was that we convene some kind of roundtable of electrical building, all-electric building experts. We've heard from a couple today. And whether we form, we actually physically convene them or we virtually convene them, I guess the point is to have some group that a builder could consult to ask questions about, how do you do this, how do you do that? And Ken, can you tell us, are we already working on something like that? Or?
Yes, we've had a commitment through our Bloomberg partners to provide some initial assistance, similar to what's going to be provided in Oakland for the same purpose. That would take the form, most likely, of some webinars that would at least be recordable so that we would have those on file. But getting more assistance in terms of like, sitting down and going through plans and things like that is going to go through that budget pretty quickly. So if we did have a roundtable group that was there on their own dime, that would certainly be a huge bonus.
Yeah, I'm just imagining, I know obviously, there's only so much you can expect from folks in their volunteer time, when they're, they've also got day jobs. But anything that could resemble a train-the-trainer or a networked approach to spreading the knowledge would be ideal. Because I know we don't have, I know we're very short, I'd say, staff particularly around planning and building.
And certainly, some of that training, too, would be applied to our own staff so that they're getting better at that particular aspect.
Okay, thank you.
And we did have Diane Bailey from Menlo Spark here. They have already put out an all-electric multi-family guide on how to do all-electric multi-family, both low-rise and high-rise. So there are resources out there for people who want to learn how to do it. The technology is there. It's mostly a matter of learning how to put it in your buildings.
Thank you. Councilmember Camus?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if the maker of the motion can ask for at least a report back on ADUs. I'm still concerned because I don't think my, I don't want to speculate that nothing is going to happen, but I was hoping to get an answer back from staff. And if you can include that in the motion, I'd be happy to support the motion. I don't know who made the motion.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes, Councilmember Davis, the request was for a report back on ADUs specifically, and that's with regard to the costs?
Yes, I just want to make sure we're not hindering the production of ADUs. And if the staff can report back on that after talking to...
And you want like an information memorandum?
That would be great. And I mean, if everybody else wants to know, they can take it back to council. And I mean, if everybody else wants to know, they can take it back to council, but an information memorandum would be good enough for me.
So you're asking for an infomemo before it comes back to council?
In October.
In October?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, with the second, okay, great.
Yeah, and I just wanted, I don't want to have my comments misinterpreted. I didn't ask these questions because I care about developers. I care about people being able to afford to live here in the city of San Jose. And I will continue to fight for people to have lower costs, and that's what I try to do. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's vote then on Councilmember Davis's motion.
I'm still waiting on votes.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you all. And then on 7.3, I know we don't have a motion yet, but...
Woo!
There's a motion approved from, that was Councilmember Jimenez, is that right? Okay. Just had a question about the divestment, which is obviously part of the resolution. And maybe this is a question for you, Ed. We, obviously, the biggest investments we have are not directly controlled by the council or by staff that reports to council, but rather through retirement funds. And I'm wondering how this translates to investment decisions under retirement funds?
It wouldn't because the city council, as you mentioned, only controls the investments that it has with regard to investments to our finance department. The retirement boards have a fiduciary responsibility to invest the funds in the retirement plan, so they're the only ones who could take action related to this matter for pension fund investments.
Okay. Then perhaps could I just ask the maker of the motion to consider a referral to the retirement boards? And perhaps our team could provide some information about the financial concerns that many experts have about investing in fossil-fuel-based companies? The basic theory being that there is, essentially, the market is overvaluing the fossil fuels that are in the ground, and the rights to those fuels and the value of those rights will decline over time. And so the hope is that we might refer this for their consideration, perhaps with little additional information that we could provide. Maker of the motion, consider that amendment.
Yeah, I do have a question.
Sure.
I'm okay with that. You know, the referral essentially to, yeah, totally, totally on board with that. One of the questions I have, though, is I know oftentimes when we talk about investments, we're thinking about the retirement portfolios and such, but there's actually other investments, and there's actually an investment policy that the finance department uses when we're investing other monies. And so I'm curious, does this not apply to that as well?
No, no, it does. What I said is, the city council only has policies with regard to investments that the city controls. And that would apply to the investment policy to the extent that they do their due diligence, and it is possible to divest and to make changes. And I believe they're going to come back with that recommendation because there are some issues that will arise as a result of trying to divest. But the intent is to look at those issues to determine if you can. And yes, the investment policy applies to all the investments the city controls. The city does not control the pension investments that the retirement board controls.
Okay, good, good. Thank you, I appreciate that. I just, I heard mostly pension, that's why I was, wanted to make sure. So Mayor, you had mentioned a referral to the pension boards, is that what?
That's right.
Yeah, so I'm totally, I think that's great.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I talked about this earlier, and I would just like to ask the maker of the motion to clarify item four on the resolution to make sure that we make it clear to staff when we're talking about the analysis relating to carbon-based fuel taxes, including HR 763. We would put a comma there, or similar measures that also mitigate the hardships for households during the transition to a cleaner economy.
All right, is that a request for a friendly amendment?
Yes, it is.
I'll accept it.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. I actually think my question was answered regarding the retirement board. So this doesn't bind the retirement boards, and the amendment requests that we refer this to the retirement boards for their consideration. Is that correct? Okay, that's the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Jimenez?
Forgot I had the button push, but I do have a question, just for clarity. So we should expect, based on everything that was said regarding the investments, the finance department at some point is going to report back to us to give us a sense as to what their perspective is on this?
Correct. My understanding is the language was revised a bit in order to allow the staff to consider that, as opposed to doing it without actually considering what the impacts are of that, and they'll get back to you on that.
Okay. And then is there a timeline on that? I mean, next...
The resolution doesn't have a timeline, but I'm sure that the staff will be considering that.
And also, annually, you do review the investment policy, as you know, through the PIS Vis Committee, but, so that it'll come up no later than that, but they may be doing that earlier than that, as they're looking at their policy.
Okay, good, thank you. Yeah, I should probably offer too, I think, you know, I know that most cities go off of a list that I think the city of New York has put together with regard to what sort of are quote-unquote fossil-fuel companies, companies that, I think, the household names with regard to petroleum, for example. I know that equities is not something that our finance department invests a lot in. And so most of those instruments are bonds and money market funds and things like that. So we're not likely to have a lot of money in those kinds of assets, though certainly retirement funds may well. And so I just want to level-set expectations that there's probably not going to be an enormous amount of divestment from the decisions that we make routinely here at the city, but the retirement board certainly might. Okay, are there questions or... All right, and on Councilmember Jimenez's motion, let's vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you all.
And thanks to the members of the committee who came out to speak.
Jim Larkin, you're here to speak on Open Forum regarding homeless concerns.
I've come today to talk to you about the growing homeless problem here in San Jose. And I know that you've worked diligently to get this done, and if you had not, the jungle would still be the jungle. Marcom Plaza would not be a homeless shelter across from our plant, and we would not have a new homeless shelter being built on Center Road. And I know you've committed a number of city resources in order to help the homeless find temporary housing. But these efforts are failing, and these efforts have resulted in District 7 being burdened with most of the homeless problems, as you see in the pictures, okay? The Marcom Plaza is in District 7. The new facility is in District 7. And there's evidence that proves that the majority of homeless people and homeless shelters are in District 7. So as an individual, and I live in District 7, so I ask myself, as a resident, what can I do? I can contact my council representative to find out what she can do, or I can reach out to the city services and find out what I can do to make my street better. I can contact, I can come to the city council and talk to you people, and I can work with my police and fire services to make sure and help them provide safety for my area. And I've done this. My wife and I have committed, my wife and I called, emailed numerous times concerning a homeless shanty that is growing and being constructed on Lone Bluff and Pendle Drive. These efforts have only resulted in nothing constructive happening, though we've been told that people went out and talked to him. The first contact was on August 7th to councilmember Sparza after the individual had been on, had been building his shanty since July 4th. With all the emails and several agencies directed by the councilmember's office, nothing constructive happened. We've had to drive by this growing homeless shanty every time we leave our homes and every time we return to our home. Further, as a result of this individual, other homeless people seem to seek out this area along Lone Bluff, believing that is, believing that is a new affordable housing area in San Jose. Yes, we were successful in getting a large amount of illegal dumping removed. However, they could not remove the individual's trash around his home's compartment. And this is the chronic hotspot in San Jose that we have called in to add to the San Jose app to have cleaned up at least once a week. And as soon as it's cleaned up, guess what happens? More is dumped. I can only do so much, and I'm frustrated. Visitors come to my home and comment why I allow this to continue. My neighbors wonder why if I am attempting to get the city service to address it, nothing is happening. Some have said they also have contacted the council member. Thanks to San Jose PD, the van that you see was towed away on September 16th. The residential, the residual stuff was left on the sidewalk in front of the shanty, and we could not use the sidewalk. I got an email today that Vanessa had gone out to talk to the man, and the homeless concerns contacted the individual and stated that they had been, they have been having trouble getting this individual to leave. As I have shown, great effort has been addressed, this homeless shanty has been expended. I would venture to bet that had this individual parked his van with all of his stuff on it in front of any one of your phones, that it would not have taken a month to get it removed. I thank you all for your service to our community, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Larkin. And again, the intersection here is what streets?
Pardon me?
What streets are we looking at, the intersection?
The shanty is at the corner of Lone Bluff and Pendle Drive.
Lone Bluff, okay. Thank you, sir. All right, the meeting is adjourned.